In vain, last week's meeting of our budget work session had several items on the agenda. We've had a request for the addition of one, which is a public comment. Mr. DeVille, if you'd like to step up, come on up. Anybody else who'd like to speak, opportunities will arise. Raise your hand.
Chairman Tate, members of the board. Sheriff Holland has given me a 45-minute time limit. I appreciate your indulgence.
You could be fired off.
I'm not sure where we are in the negotiations, so I'll preface everything by I hope that my remarks are either taken neutrally or towards advancing, making county schools' case rather than alienating, which is always a possibility when I'm speaking. And also bear with me, please, I'm 55 and I've got cataracts, so I can barely see. I've got surgery in a couple of weeks and hopefully the wax paper in front of my eyes will go away. I would suggest to you this evening that we are no longer treading water as a school system, as a statewide system, that we are indeed going under. Last fall Senator Davis came to rebut some of my remarks at your meeting. You all were sent a full rebuttal of his remarks, which he's never countered. And I want to mention this evening what I take to be the key half-truth that he advanced. And that was that we were spending more than ever in public education in North Carolina. And the reason I bring that up, I think it's relevant to your considerations this evening, it's also now being bandied about to General Assembly as they close out their long session. It is indeed true that we are spending more dollars in North Carolina public education than ever before. That is an empirical fact. What is not a fact is that it is not taking into account the 70,000 to 90,000 additional students that we have statewide. That fact is not, that claim does not take into account inflation since 2008. There was another claim that Senator Davis made that is just empirically wrong. It's easily knowable. And he said that those of us who are activists in public education frequently use 2008 as a benchmark, as a high watermark, because that's when the federal stimulus hit. That's not true. It can't be true. Barack Obama did not get elected until 2008 November. The stimulus was not passed by the federal government until February. Those dollars did not hit states and LEAs until August and September of 2009. So the 2008-2009 school year in North Carolina and in Macon County was all from our efforts, our meaning at the state and county level. What I'm asking you tonight, Macon County Schools is asking you for the restoration of $200,000 to the current operating expense that was shifted from the current operating expense to capital outlay. Just give you again, a few statistics. Again, this is from the North Carolina Tax and Justice Center. We've got, since 2008, we've got 91,000 more students in the state. We're 5.4% below pre-recession spending. If you take out teacher pay, the House budget, which has been, you know, was currently, you know, better than the Senate's, is still at least a half percent below 2008 when adjusted for inflation. Statewide, we need another $293 million to pay for the new class-size caps, which we have a one-year hiatus on, but there is no guarantee that that hiatus, that reprieve will be continued. And that's, will hit us hard here in Macon County at the K-3 and fourth and fifth grade level. Textbook funding, and this is where Senator Davis would have a point, textbook funding is still half of what it was in 2010. The 2010 would be a combination of federal and state efforts. Instructional supply money is less than half of what it was in 2010. And again, that's a combination of state and federal efforts. And again, those statistics all come from the North Carolina Budget and Tax Center, and those were just published a couple of weeks ago. We're $600 on a per pupil basis below where we were adjusted for inflation in 2008. We've had a loss of over 8,000 teacher assistants since 2008. Those numbers come from the Department of Public Construction and Public Schools First. Dr. Baldwin could tell you, maybe he's already told you, that we are facing for Title I, II, and III, a 10% across-the-board cut from the federal government. That's two teachers here in Macon County. That's a crippling of our ESL program if that were to actually go through as proposed. We've seen cuts in teacher allotments and in central office staff. You can walk through the central office and you can see all the empty offices. You can walk through our K-4 schools and you can see teachers struggling. With the vastly increased testing load at the K-3 level, you can see teachers in the hallway in Macon County Schools doing the required testing on a one-on-one basis in the hallway while a custodian watches their class. This is in what should be a first-world county, in a first-world state, in a first-world county. And we've got a custodian watching a class while the teacher's doing the testing in the hallway. And that's not Dr. Baldwin's fault, it's not the school board's fault, it's not that teacher's fault, it's not that principal's fault. That's a combination of workload.
Not the county commissioner's fault.
It's not the county commissioner's fault either. Not the county commissioner's fault, but I would suggest to you, Commissioner Beal, that it is something that the county commissioners could do something about if they chose to do so. So I would suggest that you're correct, that it's not their fault, that there is a constitutional obligation on the part of the state to take care of that. And we can jump right to that if you'd like, that, you know, I think that we have the capacity here to fill in those gaps. And it's a question of whether or not we're going to continue to look at Raleigh, to look at Washington DC, which don't seem to have the same commitment to public education that they used to, and say, "Well, there's just nothing that can we be done." Or we can look to our own devices and see what we can do on a local level. Give you again, an idea of what's happening at the high school. We have a population of 1,000 students. We only have two foreign language teachers, 4,000. French, two, three, and four is taught simultaneously in the same classroom. We've lost our drama teacher, we've lost social studies teachers, we've lost English teachers. For almost 20 years Denise Davis has taught a military history class at the high school. That has been an incredibly engaging, captivating class for those students. It's allowed those students not only to learn military history, but she has brought in veterans from World War II, Korea, and Vietnam, and they can better understand, really comprehend, when they talk to a POW or somebody who's been wounded in action, the sacrifices that our servicemen and women have provided this country. That class will not be offered next fall due to budget cuts. My baby, my philosophy class, that really gets me out of bed in the morning in the fall, won't be offered next fall for the first time. I've got a stack of testimonials like this that I've collected over 20 years. I have students write an analysis of the class on the last day. They'll tell you that it was the best class that they taught, that they will tell you five years, 10 years, 15 years after they left the class, that they still use those skills, that it caused them to make better life decisions because of what they learned in that class. And again, that class is gone next fall. I think there's a difference between those of us who taught in 2008 and those who have only maybe started teaching since 2012, 2013. We know what it can be because we've seen what can be. And I think that's why there's more frustration on our part. We look at students who are struggling, especially at the K-3 level, and when we see that student's struggling and we don't have that extra guidance counselor, that teacher assistant to put on to that student, it's heartbreaking because we know if we had it, we could fix it. We've been hit in two directions. Our funds and our support have dropped while the neediness has increased with the population that we now serve. I have, let's see here. I hear over and over from those who seem to think that populations just changed their mind on a whim, that quote, "Society has just gone to hell." I strongly disagree with that sentiment because I don't think it takes into account what has nearly destroyed the middle class of this country. I would suggest that if you take the work of the leading economists, political scientists, human geographers, historians, and policy analysts, that perhaps there's eight variables that have converged to erode, destroy the middle class. Automation, robots, probably more than anything else, have displaced manufacturing workers. We've relocated manufacturing operations overseas in search of cheap labor. We've got new trade policies which have lowered barriers, it's made this country wealthier, but that wealth has not been distributed evenly. We've got policies which have decreased the tax burden on the wealthiest, and we've shifted that tax burden in the form of sales taxes, service taxes, tuition hikes, and other fees onto the working in the middle class. The unions that we had in the 50s and 60s and early 70s have about gone away. We have failed to reinvest in critical infrastructure. What we used to invest in infrastructure in the 30s and the 40s and the 50s and the 60s and 70s, we're no longer doing. So no longer, that takes away capacity, plus it takes away jobs. If you look at the public sector job growth since 2009, I think you'll find that it's negative. And finally, skyrocketing healthcare costs. Now, the reason I take up your time this evening to itemize what most of you probably know, what most people in the room probably know have hurt the middle class, is that public education is one way that you can turn the corner on that. You all cannot turn the corner on every single macroeconomic force afoot in this planet, in this country, in this state, in this county. But I think that we can do more in the area of public education. I started presenting to county commissioners in the fall of 1996. And after my first visit Superintendent Lonnie Crawford invited me in his office to talk about strategy. And he gave me a handout from the Public School Forum of North Carolina, and he showed me a graph. And there were a lot of graphs, a lot of charts on it. But the key one that Mr. Crawford pointed out to me was relative effort. That's capacity to pay versus what's actually funded. And Macon County was down there 98, 99, 100. If you look at it for 2016, we're at 96. The states that are below, excuse me, the counties that are below us are Clay, Jackson, Swain, and Graham. Now, what do we all have in common? We're all on beautiful land, it's very valuable, and it's heavily populated by second homeowners who aren't particularly inclined to pay a lot of taxes to fund public education because their kids are grown. I don't bring up that statistic to shame you. I bring it up as hopefully a point of reflection that maybe if we have the ability to pay, we can do a little bit more. I firmly believe, truly believe this, I'm not just saying this as a rhetorical point, that if you all went to the K-3, K-4 schools in this county and you spent 15, 20 hours next October, that if you came back to this budget process, you would not restore $200,000 to the current operating expense. You would be having a serious vigorous conversation about how you could come up with 500,000 or 600,000, or what I think we really need probably in the neighborhood of $800,000 to make it right. I think that there are perhaps two hurdles that, from what I hear going on, not just this budget round, but in past budget rounds, that there are two hurdles. One is the fund balance, and the other one is what Raleigh should be doing. And let's see here. Excuse me, just can't see. I think I understand the fund balance concern and the skittishness. I think one of our superintendents prior to Dr. Baldwin was either not fully forthcoming or fully knowledgeable on budget issues. I watched him do a budget presentation in this room one night. It made absolutely no sense to me. It was the most nonlinear thing I think I've ever heard. Jim Davis sitting right there, Brian McClellan sitting right there where Mr. Tate is, peppered that superintendent with questions. And when it was all over, I didn't feel bad because they were talking about spending money. I came up and I shook their hands and I thanked them for their tough questions because I don't want money to be squandered. I want the most conservative people in the world looking after these scarce, hard-fought, hard-worked-for dollars that the taxpayers of Macon County give us. I don't want waste. That same superintendent had an $800,000 boondoggle, wanted to hire 11 people at about 70,000 per, with STEM money. It was not sustainable. I wrote an op-ed with my sister. I took my name off. I know the superintendent knew where it came from. I know I already crossed swords with him, you know, asking questions, tough questions about other money that was, I thought, in my opinion, being misspent, going nowhere, not truly delivering value. I say that tonight because I want you to know that in the course of my 20 years of coming here and coming before the school board, I don't just come asking for money. If we're misspending it, I want you all to get out the sharp pencils and the green eye shades and say, "That makes no sense." I would hope that we could put the past in the past. I would hope that Dr. Baldwin, in his four years of service to Macon County Schools, has demonstrated that he can be trusted with the fund balance of $800,000. So we're talking about a little bit less than 2% of a $42 million current, I mean, operating budget. I would hope that you trust the financial management of Jim Breedlove, and Melissa Evans, and Tommy Cave, and Stephanie McCall, and Fred Goldsmith. I would hope that you trust that. You might want to take a page out of Ronald Reagan's playbook, "Trust but verify." So give us the money and then meet on a more frequent basis to make sure that we're spending it properly. But please hold us harmless in the process. Hold the children of Macon County harmless in this tuggle, this tussle over the fund balance. I think we can get past that.
John, I'm gonna ask you to hurry on up.
Okay, I'm gonna, the other point I've already made, so I would hope that we can, thank you. I appreciate all of your time, I appreciate your service. Thank you.
No, if you want to finish up, go ahead.
No, that's, I think, because when Mr. Beal asked, made the one point, I think I made that one, so I will, I don't want to wear out my welcome. But thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Good luck with the end. Thanks, John. Item 2A, requests for Macon County Schools. Dr. Baldwin, I guess if y'all have anything else y'all would like to say, now's a good time, if not, we'll discuss it among ourselves, and I'm sure we may have questions. Angie, anything?
Just here to answer any questions you might have.
I'll, we'll look to the liaisons, I will be, I'll say first, I'm sure we'll all say our piece on this before we kind of show a knot of heads or vote, or however we're going to do this. But I don't think I've ever hidden behind the fact, and I hope nobody can ever dispute that I haven't ever voted for anything against public education. I've always tried to be a stalwart up here, and any free dollar that we could find, I would hope would go y'all's way. The unfortunate stance of that is, is that when we go to balance on our budget, it's kind of like where do we put, do I want to take something from the sheriff, from his SRO, or something else? You know, if I want to pull something from the health department, it might be of a dire need, you know. It's probably the most difficult thing I have to do with this, see, I know where my heart tells me I want to put the money, but I know where my mind sometimes has to say, "I've really got to watch things." But with that being said, I'm interested to hear what these other members say, that again, as y'all know, I'm a strong supporter, I hope anytime we find a free dollar, if we can send it to public education, I'm all for it.
Mr. Tate, I'd like to make a motion. I'll talk to Mr. Breedlove, and I'll talk with Dr. Baldwin about this motion. And I'd like to read it. And I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education budget be adopted at $7,138,330 with two stipulations. Number one stipulation, when the state adopts their budget, that our chief financial officer, and the Board of Education's financial officer, Ms. Rowland, the county manager, and you as the superintendent, come together immediately. There's a lot of dust here, and I don't want to go into this guessing situation. Then, if there's adjustments and things to be met, needs at that time, you let the board know. Number two, and Mr. DeVille spoke to this, I'd like for those same four people, Ms. Cook, Ms. Lawrence, Derek, and you, meet quarterly to, I guess, to communicate what the county's vision is regarding monies and what the school board, what y'all are needing. I'm not sure we're communicating as well as we could. And I think if we meet quarterly, that we can progress in the communication line to more understanding. My objective is when this comes around next year, that the chief financial officers and the leadership will have a more clear understanding of what's needed. And I've spoken to Mr. Breedlove and Dr. Baldwin, that, I hadn't spoken to Lloyd, I don't think, but I've spoken to Mr. Rowland. And that would be my motion. I'd be glad to go back over it, or?
I understand where you're coming from, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to the motion? We have a second on the motion discussion.
Clarify a little bit now, is that the budget request, what's the number you got?
They have requested, they've requested $7,338,330. And the county's recommendation was $7,138,330. The state has not settled, which makes that $200,000 off. The state is not, the school board, nor us, we do not know what the state's going to lock. And when the state does make that decision, we've asked these four to huddle up and look at this again, to see what needs to be done.
If you remember Paul, when Superintendent Baldwin showed his graph, their fund balance can go anywhere from 199,000, I think it was, all the way to 700 and something thousand.
An appropriation of somewhere between 200,000, minimum 200,000, it could be as much as 1.3 if the Senate budget is approved.
So that's what we're looking at, if we, so we go ahead and approve the budget, is outlined to the county manager, and then that's where we need to pay attention is what goes on with the state budget. And that way we'll know as we go ahead, and there won't be an extra, it ain't so much the $200,000 to my mind this year, it's the next year that we could really get hit hard if we don't pay attention. We could really have a, could, right, Chris, we could really be looking at something, or we could not. We don't know yet. It looks like it's going to land somewhere in the middle as of today. Somewhere in the middle of that, so, but we don't know that yet. So that, we discussed the motion, Gary and I went over it, we went over to the county manager, and with the chairman, and to John's point, and his point is well-taken. Remember the superintendent gave this board the charge of what kind of school system we want, but we want the best that we can have.
Yeah, I was just on, he said approve the school board's request.
That's what I understood.
And the school board's request, obviously $200,000.
It's a county request.
Okay, that's what, had you scum, scrapping, you're trying to?
That I'm wrong?
It's the original request, the county.
He said the county.
So in that second would be for the original request.
The issue, what matters is the man.
And that's the only number in the motion?
$7,138,330, that was in your motion, Mr. Shields, just to make sure.
Yes, yes. And with the two stipulations, after the dust-up, the state adopts the budget.
Right, that's just current expense.
To go back and look at this, you've got $200,000, but go back and look and see what's needed there. If it needs to be updated or upgraded. But these four people, go back and sit down and look at it, then bring that recommendation back to us.
Well, I think communication's key. I don't know, I don't feel too comfortable about voting to demand someone, I think there needs to be a party if they're all agreeable. I don't think I can force someone to do it. Certainly, the more communication, the better.
But I believe we're okay with those quarterly meetings, right? And we have one before a quarterly meeting, and that's one when the state adopts their budget. And I believe Mr. Breedlove and I talked about the end of August the other day, when I talked with Dr. Baldwin.
We're hoping that the state has a budget before $100,000.
Right, that it be in July, so that's why I said when adopted.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have an open public session here on how that state budget affects our local budget, absolutely.
And I think with those four communicating, they can relay that back to us and the public as needed.
Be good on that.
Mr. Breedlove?
We appreciate everything y'all have done. And so if that's what you feel is in the best interest, then we, like I said, we're here to listen. Well, I will tell you what that decision will probably mean, is that we have six teaching positions right now that we will not fill until we get, I'm gonna see if I'm right when I say, I'm about to say, Dr. Baldwin. We have six teaching positions right now that we will not fill until August comes because we're just simply not going to extend out here until we have a better grasp of the funding we have. I think it's six teaching positions and a teacher system that we have on hold, that we feel like we need, but we will continue to leave that on hold, depending on what happens here tonight.
And I still think the chief financial officers and your two leadership superintendents and your county managers can wrestle with that question to come to some conclusion of what is in the best interest of the kids of Macon County. You know, we go back from basic education to quality education. And I don't want to get on the soapbox on that because I think we have responsibility for quality education.
Yes, a couple of things. One, I think that's worthy of supporting, given all the players that's been involved in making the decision. I will say, probably if it was my decision to make, I would fund it at the full amount so that we can go ahead and plan and have those teachers in place, have that exact meeting that you're talking about, and if the state money comes, then get the 200 back. Rather than, that's just my preference of a way to do it. You know, I think, I think that Mr. Shields' idea of having meetings, periodic meetings, will be key in building a relationship, a better relationship with the school board. And that that's not something that's gonna happen with one meeting, it's something that's gonna happen over time. And I think um, you know, maybe maybe not members of this board and your board, but board members on both sides in the future, hopefully it'll make for a for even better situation. So so, you know, obviously, a lot of homework's been done by the liaisons. And I think their their recommendation is worthy of considering. But I do have some concerns about not funding, so I've been looking at a shortfall when we have an opportunity to perhaps uh correct that.
Thank you. Ryan?
No, I mean, as far as the shortfall from the teachers, they can go ahead and fund the six teachers out of the fund balance if they wish. You could go ahead and do that if you wished, you can go ahead and fund them out of your fund, out of your fund balance if you want to. Take a chance on that. That's up to you, that's up to the school board. But that's a heck of a chance.
With a reduction in our operating budget to two hundred thousand dollars, you can say go ahead and fund those?
Well, that's up to the school board. That's up to you.
It's not really a reduction, 'cause currently you're getting seven one for fiscal sixteen seventeen.
But our operating budget was seven three three eight, correct?
I don't know.
It was seven three three eight in fiscal year fifteen.
Prior to that.
Seven point eight in fiscal year fifteen sixteen, and seven point, or se- excuse me, seven point three in fifteen sixteen when seven point eight was requested, and seven point three in thirteen fourteen when seven point eight was requested. And again, uh those two years is when we saw that fund balance go from two hundred thousand to two million.
So it, I misunderstood last year that we were to take two hundred thousand dollars out of our fund balance to keep our operating budget at seven three three eight?
Two hundred thousand of the, I think that was the consensus of the board, that two hundred thousand of the revenue that was going back into the fund balance, which in uh from fourteen fifteen to fif- or from thirteen fourteen to fourteen fifteen was one point six million, and from fifteen sixteen to sixteen seventeen was five hundred sixty-five thousand. I think that the idea from the board was, and then in the presentation where we saw that the seven hundred thousand of it was reoccurring that was going back into the fund balance, I think that the idea there was to use two hundred thousand of that recurring money that was going back into the fund balance to make up the shortfall in operating funds, yes.
Just to be clear, were we directed to maintain the operating budget last year of seven three three eight?
At the county, from the county level? I think that was the idea. Was that operating budget maintained?
It was.
At seven three three eight?
So moving forward, is your operating budget seven one three eight? Or are we supposed to use fund balance to keep it at seven three three eight?
Well, I think that, I think you said, I think that with the two hundred thousand, that of course that we talked about in the in budget work session prior, dealing with this fiscal year. I think the latest meeting with the liaisons was, it was gonna be about half a million to six hundred thousand that actually got spent out of fund balance. Were were those funds spent in the operating budget? The difference?
We spent seven three three eight, and then how much of the operating?
Appropriated seven twenty-six thousand eight fifty to the sheriff.
Seven hundred twenty-six thousand eight fifty out of fund balance to the operating budget? So really, the operating budget wasn't at seven three, it's seven eight. So it wouldn't be at seven, so so it's at seven eight rather than seven three.
And we're funding it at seven one.
Well, I mean, in fifteen sixteen, the request was for seven eight as well. But six hundred thousand went back into the fund balance, and we had provided them seven three. And again, that was five hundred thousand less than the request. But fund balance increased the same as it did um from thirteen fourteen to fourteen fifteen.
So a lot of depends on the state budget.
That's what we're talking about exactly.
That's what we're just sitting here waiting for.
So it comes back to that.
There's dust out here, we're trying to make decisions on unknown. I I can't.
And it and it makes it hard on the school board, it makes it hard on us. It ain't, it's not different between us and them, when you've got a third player view, it makes it hard on everybody. So I think if the communication, you know, between the, on the finance thing, get ahead of it.
Well, it goes back to the question about those six positions, though.
Well, that's up to y'all, I mean, that's.
Well, we, I mean, and and.
I guess what I'm asking, are you saying that we funded out of fund balance?
You could. That's a heck of a chance.
Yes, it is.
Well, in budget, well, in budget, and what I'm kinda, I guess what I'm cloudy on here is in budget discussions, we were saying that it would be a positive impact. In other words, it wouldn't incre- it wouldn't increase the local contribution. But the, if a compromise was reached on that House bill, that it would impact six teaching positions.
That's correct.
And then the title to funding with no certainty at the federal budget level, we were assuming that totally going away to cost us two positions. Then, you know, so it looks, it looks to me like if that doesn't totally go away. Uh then there was a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars that was budgeted for uh increase, uh teacher salary increase, that, you know, at the last meeting, we're not even certain how that's going to affect locally paid teachers, or even if it's gonna affect locally paid teachers. So in my mind, if it doesn't affect locally paid teachers, and it's not looking like it's gonna affect it, that hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars right there, I mean, at that point, that's house money to do whatever to fill those teaching positions, or could be used to put toward that teaching position.
So just to be clear, you're you're directing us to move forward hiring those six positions back?
I don't think anybody's doing, I think what was said was that that's a decision of the school board and and the school administration. I think that what we're saying is, if if what we're talking about, that we discussed even at last meeting at a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, if that doesn't affect locally paid teachers, then why can't that one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars go to it? Or or did, is?
You know, we've we've, I think we've done the best that we can to tell you what our budget is for next year.
Right, right.
And what what we're saying is that we're uncomfortable at this point with the two hundred thousand dollar reduction in our operating budget, which it is a two hundred thousand dollar reduction on last year's operating budget, which was at seven three three eight. We were directed to use two hundred thousand of our fund balance to maintain seven three three eight. What I hear you saying is that next year will be seven one three three eight, unless we choose to use our fund balance.
Choose to use fund balance, yes, yes. Or um what was the actual operating budget again, that you said you went above the seven three with the?
Seven eight.
Seven eight.
Rightly.
And I felt like, you know, looking at, looking at, when we were looking at trends last year of, and we're not gonna go over them again, but the trend in fund balance growth, um and the proportion of that trend that was operating revenue that that was going back into that, I think that we were under the impression, this board was under the impression, that with that trend, two hundred thousand dollars from fund balance transferred to operating budget, that that would be simply two hundred thousand dollars, bringing it back up to seven three, and still with those trends experienced modest but growth in the fund balance, with that.
I I understand what you're saying.
And then when you.
I won't dispute it. I would just say that I think if you looked at the last five years of trends in fund balance, you might be able to figure.
Right, and then another thing, though, um you know, in fifteen sixteen, the, I think it was twenty-six point seven two teachers that were paid from locally paid funds. In sixteen seventeen, it went to, I think, thirty point seven two.
Now, we it, we probably will finish the year up at around twenty-nine this year.
Twenty-nine, so, okay, so we're off about point six or point seven?
We're still figuring those things out, based on um the number of um locally paid teachers that we have, based on their current salaries and based on our operating budget.
Right.
How many we can place on local.
And so I think too, at the, at the beginning, when we first got the budget.
I will say this too, uh based on our planning allotment, last year, the state appropriated two hundred or allotted two hundred two point five state paid positions. And as you know, uh that's a, at each grade level, the state funds portions of teaching positions. It went from two oh two point five to two hundred point five, and now it's at one ninety-nine point five. And our enrollment has increased, based on that planning law. So I don't know where we're supposed to take that additional state paid uh position or um the lobs of that state paid position, but we're gonna be looking for that as well.
So if we're at twenty-nine teacher, twenty-nine locally paid teachers this year, I think the original budget proposal said that we were, basically, the the local allocation was for thirty-six and a half teachers.
That was if, that was if the Senate bill, uh if the Senate passed its budget as of, as we thought it was gonna pass back in April. Right now, if the Senate budget is passed, the one thing that we did not know in April that has since occurred is that the Senate um put a lot of restrictions on waivers. And those restrictions will actually cost us um probably around eight positions, I believe we calculated. And that's with the House Bill thirteen compromise. Now, the House budget has none of those restrictions on waivers, so we're really hopeful that the House budget is passed. But if the Senate budget's passed, we're looking at appropriating a maximum, or I should say a maximum. It could be as much as one point three million of our, one point three million dollar fund balance.
And I guess, I guess that's what I'm saying there a while ago. Four people can have a lot of clarity session.
Well, and it goes back to those six positions. If the Senate bill's passed, if the Senate's budget's passed as it's presented, then there's no compromise, then we're appropriating one point three million of our one point three million dollar fund balance. So we can't hire those six positions right now, until the Senate and House compromise and the government government compromise on the budget.
But this, other, oh, I'm sorry, I'm just kidding.
Nobody knows.
Or or this, are those six positions, are are these gonna be new positions, or positions that have been previously unfilled?
That's, that, these positions are are positions that we had in sixteen seventeen.
Positions. Right, okay.
And you'll notice on that is that there's several that have already been eliminated. Several that, or one has been um combined, several that have been eliminated are EC positions, because the EC budget is over right now. Part of the reason that it's over is because the state funds us a twelve and a half percent of our ADM as EC. And currently, we've got about nineteen percent of our ADM that is considered to be intestate of the EC.
Right.
So we've we've eliminated some of those positions, because if we don't eliminate the EC positions, those will be additional locally paid teaching positions that we can't support. So we, those positions have already been eliminated.
So if you, if, so I think you said, a low of one ninety-five and a high of about two oh two from what you get to the state allocation?
Right now, the plan on that we've been given is that the state will fund us at a hundred and ninety-nine point five state paid positions next year. That is not taken into account Senate Bill fifteen, which could move that number up to um one, uh two oh five point five.
And so that's the six positions that you're referring to?
No, the budgets that we presented take um assume that Senate Bill fifteen will pass. So that 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 hundred ninety-nine thousand, the best that we can hope for, appropriating a hundred ninety-nine thousand out of fund balance assumes that Senate Bill fifteen will pass. If Senate Bill fifteen doesn't pass, then we're looking for additional positions.
Right. Well, and and there was two things, uh you know, in in fifteen sixteen, the number of, the number of locally paid teachers we were paying for was twenty-six point seven two.
I think it got down to about twenty-three, and one of the reasons that it got down to twenty-three, um I know we've talked about this several times, but it, we, um back in uh, back in um fourteen fifteen, the Senate, the General Assembly indicated that they were gonna cut teacher assistance by twenty-five percent, and they were gonna uh require that the local LEA fund driver's ed from what they call funds of aid. I don't know what that meant, other than that we had to pay for it. That was the reason that we requested seven point eight, that would cover those teacher assistance and driver's ed. I understand why you didn't fund us at seven point eight, because just what we're talking about. We still had to make the the cuts necessary to cover the driver's ed, and the school board and I felt like, and the principals felt like, that the teacher assistance was important enough that we would cut other positions so that we could pay for those teacher assistance. We we felt like that we should be able to cover, uh provide a teacher assistant in every kindergarten and first grade classroom in this county. We're doing that right now. Some of them are twenty-nine and a half hours, but we do have all of our kindergarten and first grades covered. We cut those things out of our budget in fifteen sixteen in preparation for those cuts. Actually, I guess we cut those out in fourteen fifteen. The state budget didn't come out until October of two thousand sixteen. We'd made those cuts, we had that money sitting there ready to pay for the teacher assistance and driver's ed. Then the state funded us at that level. We can't go out and hire those teachers and personnel back in November. The smart thing to do in my mind is to hang on to those funds and then hire those folks back in school year sixteen seventeen. Now, what hap- what I didn't know was gonna happen was that, I knew that our fund balance was gonna go up. I didn't know that we were gonna get cut in our operating expense from the county. When that happened, and we were told to maintain our operating budget at seven four point three three eight out of that fund balance, we did not, we went ahead and hired those positions that we cut out the previous year to be able to pay for the teacher assistance and driver's ed. So our locally, our locally paid uh teachers went from twenty-three in fifteen sixteen back up the amount that we'd cut out to be able to pay for teacher assistance and driver's ed. So it went from twenty-three to pro- uh around twenty-six, it's gonna be around twenty-nine by the end of this year. And it's, the bulk of that is because of the cuts that we made for teacher assistance and driver's ed a couple of years ago.
When you say cuts, you mean, you don't mean sending anybody home?
I mean attrition. I mean, as folks, and we had a whole year to get ready for that. All school year fourteen fifteen, um we were told for a solid year. I think Mr. Bill even said, I guarantee you, they're gonna cut teacher assistance, and you're gonna fund driver's ed out of your local funds. We, and we had a year to get ready for that, and we did do that. We did ask you for the money, um and I understand why you didn't fund it, because you don't know what's gonna happen. At that time, our fund balance was uh much less than it is now. I think it was around um a million dollars or so. And and what's important, I think, to look at that is that in one year, we went from uh going in the negative seven hundred thousand dollars in our fund balance to two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Next year, we have to make plans to go from, we've gotta cut seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars out of our budget just to break even. And we're at two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars of fund balance, so we've gotta cut seven hundred thousand dollars and what in my mind was the minimum of fund balance to get us to about seven hundred thousand dollars of fund balance. So we're looking at making one point two million dollars in cuts to be able to get to a fund balance of between seven hundred and fifty and a million dollars, which no one has told me what we should have in fund balance. So we felt like about one month's of payroll, uh which is around six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars, would be a good place to start. Now, we had to plan on about one, like I said, about one point two million dollars in cuts to get to that point. And we also had to account for teacher assistance and driver's ed pretty close after that. And then we also had to factor in a reduction of two hundred thousand dollars in our operating budget. So it's it's, we spent a really interesting time in trying to plan how to put teachers in classrooms.
Right, and I I think again, um it goes back to, you know, we're all kind of in limbo right now. And and maybe two years later from now, two years down the road, um just as we were, as we're sitting here today saying, you know, I can see now why that uh that half a million from seven point three to seven point eight wasn't there. Maybe we'll be saying the same thing um about this two hundred thousand, when this, after this budget comes to fruition.
Back to those six positions.
And as time, and as time continues, but I think that the um the increased communication that the Board of Commissioners has alluded to here, I I think it's gonna be a good thing. I think we'll get a lot of clarity to this once the state budget passes. And, you know, as Mr. DeVille was sitting up here talking, I couldn't um help, but but listen to the 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 things where you mentioned trust and uh, you know, what's best for the children of Macon County. And this, the recommended budget, it has nothing to do, uh when it left the operating expenses for the school system. And this, the recommended budget, it has nothing to do, uh, when it left the operating expenses for the school system flat from prior year. It has nothing to do with trust for the administration or trust, uh, that the people on the school board trust for your ability to manage money. Uh, it's nothing about that, just like you're, um, you guys are seeing the needs in public education. I think this year alone, uh, we're, we're gonna see a twenty-three percent increase in the number of, of meals that we're serving to senior citizens at, at our senior citizen center. EMS has saw an eleven point one percent increase in the number of transports we're having to do. And the number of, the, the trips to mission are increasing. And with the recent decision, um, to pull labor and delivery, uh, from Macon County, we can't help but assume that those trips are gonna continue going up to mission. We have an aging emergency communication system that is, all of our volunteer fire departments rely on, our sheriff's office relies on. Uh, and speaking of the sheriff's office, I think they had a sixteen percent increase in the number of calls. Um, and, and just alone in our out-of-county housing costs that are a result, again, indirectly of what's going on at the state and decisions made there. That is a direct impact of three hundred thousand dollars a year on the detention center budget just to be able to house inmates out of county in line with the state regulations. And, you know, I say all that to say that, taking all these needs into consideration, um, you know, Jim, with, with the Medicaid services he's providing at the health department are going out the roof. We try to do the best job we can and make sure that all these needs in the community are met, including public education. And, and it is nothing about trust. It is taking a certain amount of money that you get from having a certain tax rate and trying to distribute that money in a way that allows us to meet all these needs in our community. And at twenty, right at twenty percent of our budget, um, it is no secret that public education is and will remain a top priority for this board.
And I, I appreciate that, just, just, just in the spirit of open communication, we're not being directed to, to hire those six folks right now.
What has been the pattern, Chris, since your tenure on the board of, of anticipated state budgets? You know, we're always planning for the devastation. Has it been, has there been a crippling state budget approved? I mean, was there really a big hit in the?
I, I wish I could tell you about a pattern. You know, it goes back to what we were told about teacher assistance, driver's ed. We were told for a solid year, your teacher assistance, uh, allocation's gonna be reduced by twenty-five percent and you're gonna fund driver's ed from funds available. And then we didn't get that money until October. And then last year, uh, you know, it was, it was better. I mean, we did have a little bit more to go on in terms of planning. But this year with, uh, what the senate, uh, what we saw first from the senate with regard to the, uh, uh, class size caps. So, we, we planned for that, then House Bill thirteen came along, and then the senate actually proposed their budget and it has all those, uh, restrictions on waivers, which actually impact us more than the class size cap did. Now, uh, I can't say where that's all gonna come out. I hope that the house, if, if, if the house budget was passed just as it is, um, you know, it's obviously the best budget for us.
But it is farther apart this year then.
I've seen it.
This is by any, this budget's good for two years. This is a by any year. So, this budget's good for two years. So, it's been two years ago and they, it was not this far apart in, in when the budget come out and when you pretty much what was gonna happen, we thought.
And, but what's scary about it for us is that they both, they're both spending about the same amount of money. So, I think a compromise will get worked up pretty quickly. But the scary part is that they're spending the same amount of money and, and they impact us so differently with those restrictions on waivers on one side and the house not having those restrictions on waivers on the other side. The scary thing is since they're not spending any more money either side, you know, they, I, I think a compromise is gonna be easy to reach, but it'll have a, a pretty big impact on us.
But we do have the small school bill, it looks like it's in good shape.
And, but now both the budgets that I presented, the house and senate budget, assume that that's gonna get passed. Because it's, it's already been through the house and senate, I, I hope that the governor won't be.
And, and, and.
I don't think it matters if he did.
Hope he vetoed.
Hope that he doesn't.
Hope he won't. So.
So, that, we assumed that that will pass and that's why we put it in the vote.
So, that'll, that's more money, you know, that's, but it's already, it's earmarked.
It's already in the vote?
Yeah.
They've impressed it.
But it helps, that helps a lot. So, that'll help. And, uh, and then there's some more money that could possibly come, but the best we can hope for, if, what we need really to go away is a waiver. That's the big, that hurts worse than anything. The wa, the waivers is what hurts more than anything that you're talking about. And that, what that is, that just gives, the school board don't have no, and, and supermen don't have no ability to move a money around.
And Ronnie, do you think that that's a realistic possibility that those waivers could go away?
I think, I think the waivers are having, they're struggling, they're struggling with what to do with the waivers. Because it, every school system, I've talked, I've talked to several of them, and we're gonna talk to more of them, that they're really, but you gotta remember who you, you got, you got a new, um, leader of education going on now. You, but the waivers is, is a big thing that can really hurt rural schools.
Do you think, why do you think the house left the, um, those program enhancement teachers out of their budget? You think that was just a mistake or is there some plan, if they're not gonna, I mean, what's the plan for funding those?
They thought that that would be, that they could take the place of the waiver.
So, how are we gonna fund music, be next year if?
This dance is not over.
No.
We'll be dancing again next year when it comes to enhancing teachers, stuff like that.
But the waivers is, is huge. I mean, if, if the waivers is done away with, then we have a complete discussion of them on the money. Right, there's, to, there's a whole new discussion. If the waivers stay in there, it's, it's a new discussion to guard us.
And that goes still goes back to what.
Cause your handcuffs the school board.
Is that, when the dust settles, we're done with, we're, we're just talking.
Yeah. But, but most of the school systems are certainly against the waivers, cause it, it just ha, especially in rural, now if you're in Orange County, it don't matter. You got eighteen zillion dollars, it don't matter, but when you, when you got, there's eighty rural school systems won't care about it.
Well, I, but that, that goes back to those six positions. I hate to keep bringing that up because if we hire those six folks right now and the discussions don't go.
Where you gonna make that decision, Chris?
What's that?
Ju, first of July, tenth of July, twelfth of July?
Depends on who you talk to, Dr. Vicki Sutton, we need to do it right now.
Well, you're the man, you're the man.
Well, you know, these principals are looking for teachers right now.
And they won't get more out there.
What's your drop dead date? When the schools talk?
August, uh, teachers report August the fourteenth.
So, you've got some time, you got, you got till first of July, mid-July, anyway.
We got some time to hire them.
Yeah.
And the senate bill fifteen, now, house bill, what was the class size reduction? Were they, they retain the flexibility in that, was that house bill thirteen?
House Bill thirteen was a compromise.
House Bill thirteen, and, and now, if that, if that compromise stays in these budgets, that alone is six teaching positions, is that correct?
If the house budget's passed, it means that we will not have to hire six additional teaching positions. If the senate budget's passed, that means that we don't have to hire six additional positions to meet the class size cap. But it, it also means that those waivers are back in there, which will cost us eight positions.
You're swapping.
Six for eight.
Yeah, it's not an easy swap.
If the senate bu, if the senate budget passes, that's what we're looking at. If the house budget passes, we don't have to worry about the class size cap nor the waivers. The senate budget passes, we have, we don't have to worry about the, the class size cap. But we now have to worry about the waivers, which is not what we, we didn't know anything about those waivers in March or April.
So, that's the reason if, you know, if, if you listen to Mr. Shields' motion, you know, and what it says real closely is that as soon as the state budget is, is passed, we, you know, we know what's going on, then, then we can, real quickly, if we need to, we can come back, if we don't need to, we can't. That, that leaves the budget flat, don't take no amendments, it leaves the budget as is. And, but we should, hopefully, the way it's looking, they, they said they'd hopefully have something, you know, by the end of the month, maybe even next Friday. So, if that's the case, then that gives, still gives the school board time, but about these six positions, know what's going on. But if the waivers done away with, then we're all having a different discussion. So, that's, and as you can tell, the school budget is complicated at best. And so, uh, and always has been. But when you start adding all these caveats that they're throwing at them now, it really gets crazy. So, even though there are some good things that helps the Macon County School Board, there's some things in there that can, and if you get to studying these waivers and it's just like hang, if you handcuff Jim Rutner at health department the same way, if you want, if you want to prime example. He can't spend money on, on, on rabies shots. He can't take the money from vaccinations and he can't spend it on environmental health. You, you can't, you can't swap that, that's the same thing the school boards face. Can't take English two money from K one or K three and spend it, you know, before you could, he could, the superintendent and, and the finance department had that money. To swap that money around, that gave him flexibility, well, they took that flexibility away from him. Why, I don't know.
I don't know either, it, it.
But, but that's a big thing, so that's the reason that the motion is just to leave it flat for now, but we'll keep in constant contact with the school board and to see what's gonna happen. We may not have to do anything, but we may have to come back and do something in a hurry. We don't know that yet. Cause that's where, and that's the reason that, at the end of the day, and that was, that's what Mr. Shields communicated to, to, to Mr. Brad Love, the chairman, and, and to Mr. Baldwin. That if it leaves them in alerts about these six positions, which may be funded, we don't know, nobody knows nothing. So, we decided if you just leave it flat, keep an eye on it, and work, and work real closely with the school board, like we always have. This board, I've been here for thirteen years, we've never, uh, when we found out what was going on, we did, once upon a time, before anybody else was in the room, I think. But after that, we've always worked closely together and we've never, never been without friends. We've always worked it out, we will this time. So, that's the reason we decided just to leave it flat and come back, when we found out what's going on, nobody knew.
Just, just make sure I understand, leave it flat. They requested seven three, we're gonna fund it at seven one.
Right. But as soon as, as soon as the state.
But it's not, so it's not flat?
It's flat from last year.
Flat from last year.
Flat budget.
Okay, I understand.
But as soon as, as soon as we know what the state is doing, we may not have to do nothing at all, we may have to come back and add some to it. We, we, they cannot deplete the fund balance, cause they worked too hard. At one time, it was almost zero not long ago. And that's not good. That is Macon County taxpayer dollars, by the way, the fund balances, the school board's fund balance is Macon County taxpayer dollars.
Well, the, the part that's not Medicaid and the part that's not, um.
It's the majority of it is Macon County taxpayer dollars.
The majority, we got that two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, the bulk of the two hundred and seventy-nine thousand was Medicaid.
Somebody just tackled it.
If we, if we need to, if we need to revisit, when we revisit this, not if we, when we, when we need to revisit.
We're gonna revisit.
And, and you two gentlemen, or the group that's named, decides that, that there is a need for additional funds.
And we'll bring that to a tight end.
At that point, where would those funds come from?
Come out of general fund. Cause it'll be a one-time expenditure until, until we see what's going on, that could do us for two years.
The fund balance.
It'll be fund balance. Come out of fund balance, be one, one, it'll be one-time, not reoccurring cost until we see where we're gonna, that way we'll know what's gonna happen. We'll know at least for two years, unless they change it, I know the statement, they have done that before too. So, but we'll know it, presumably for two years. So, if it keeps this balance for two years, we'll know, hopefully, unless they, well, they have changed it again, so that's, that's the idea, Commissioner, basically. And it just, it gives his boards some security of knowing what's going on, it gives the school board security of what to do. So, and that's, and as any school board, or any board will tell you, that's, when you're working in the unknown, it, you, well, you know. And, and when you make that commitment to them, as we have, I think we can't, they can't ask for more, neither can we give them.
And I, I would like to say if we could too, in that discussion, um, as Dr. Baldwin alluded to, the board, uh, this board had contemplated last year to take two hundred thousand out of fund balance to make up that amount from seven point one to seven point three. I would like to also get a, get a detail of if it, the appropriation this year's gonna be seven hundred thousand out of fund balance to end the year, rather than the two hundred. I'd like to also look at that additional five hundred thousand dollars that went into the operating budget from fund balance. Kind of look at the positions that, that were put on with that and see how that affects the overall picture as well.
And I think that's part of that discussion.
And that's part of that discussion, we talked about.
You and Dr. Baldwin and Angel and Laura, that's part of that discussion.
Cause it is, it's gonna get, and if something don't change, it's, it's not gonna get no better, I guarantee you that.
But it is a lot brighter picture than, than we've, than we've talked about in fiscal year fifteen sixteen. I mean, when we were half a million dollars short on the request.
Or eighteen, or eighteen nine.
And that ended up a very good, positive year forever.
Just, but now, we're without positions too, though. What, part of the reason that we were at seven five was, or seven eight is because we had more people.
But I th, I still think there's a middle condition that you need to think about.
It's time to go, yeah.
This thing is not over for next year, you, you, this is.
It can change it.
You better be enhancing teachers, or those enhancing teachers aren't.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, yeah, thank y'all, it's been some very good discussion the last two meetings, uh, regarding to this. Derek, I appreciate what you had to say about our, uh, the problems we face here as commissioners and how we have to balance uh, where we spend our money and set those straight. And I, uh, I wrote down up here on my sheet of paper that, uh, so I was taking notes, I'm struggling with this decision, probably more so than any decision I've ever had uh, as a commissioner. Cause I, I sometimes, well, I do, I feel like I'm failing y'all to the point that, uh, yeah, can y'all survive on seven point one? Yeah, could you survive a little bit on, better on seven point three? Yeah, I would love to see y'all funded at eight. Uh, I'm in the schools all the time, but, uh, again, it's back to balancing those decisions. All right.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin.
Thank you.
All right. Um, Kenneth, I think you had, sorry, I appreciate your patience, I think you had, uh, a commitment, so I'm gonna go ahead and, so nobody's here from Franklin Fire Department, I'm gonna go ahead and move you on up.
As liaison to your department, I had some suggestions on, uh, handle, handle this tonight. And Paul's your representative from your district, and I think he's got some different thoughts on where we might wanna go with this. So, we'll, we'll probably both present you, uh, kinda where we're thinking, and if you have anything further you'd like to say.
Well, I'd like to, we talked about percentages and I had numbers the other night, I'm gonna give you some percentages. Our calls from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen went up forty-two percent. We're talking about a twenty-one, twenty-two percent increase. Girl, I think you'll understand this, I'm getting towards the end of my tenure farming, my equipment's wearing out, I keep it patched hung together with baling wire and duct tape and whatever, cause I'm not gonna replace it. I'm not gonna go buy a twenty-eight thousand dollar baler to replace a baler. But somehow, this community I'm in and I serve and we're there to serve the public is gonna have to replace a fire truck. So, we asked for some capital funds. This year, I gave you the statistics, and this is still last week's, our calls have gone up twenty-one percent. Now, that's a sixty-three percent increase in two years in the calls. I'm operating on the same amount of money you allotted me four years ago, when I had half this number of calls. It's flat, so if you take what I requested in our budget last year, this fire study, and I hope you'll look at this thing. This plain thing's important, folks, it's got some information in there, it gets down to the numbers. And I use these numbers to figure this out. Our calls last year, per call we had, cost seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. If you give me exactly what I requested and those calls continue for the rest of the year to go up twenty-one percent, I'm gonna get seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars per call. Folks, the public expects it. They want the department to be there. We strategically located our substation to serve the new school in Iowa, the churches, the Baptist Children's Home where you've got, uh, and, and the, uh, I call it family restoration center, but up on the hill. And we've had several calls out there. This makes us close, this substation's closer to many of my firefighters. The other thing this commission's gonna have to address is, we don't have a lot of young folks coming along. I'm losing a firefighter tomorrow, my son's going to Wisconsin. What he wants to do and what he's trained to do, the job's not here, and I had a commitment tonight, but I'm here to tell you, my community needs this. You can do what you want to, but some of us old heads, and Ronnie, I think you mentioned this one other time, when you look around at the leadership's left, a lot of them's got gray hair and gray beards. It's going to be tough. You're going to have to figure out how you're going to provide fire protection, if you're going to provide it, and rescue protection. And if you're not going to provide it, let the community know you're not going to provide it. And don't have them expecting us to take every little call when DOT can't get to the tree across the road and the school bus is blocked in. Is that an emergency? Is that what you want me to cut out? You know, it's up to this board to decide. But those are the numbers, those are the percentages. Two years, sixty-three percent increase, same number of dollars I had four years ago. I'm wearing stuff out. You look at the ages of the equipment. We bought some used equipment to meet OSFM requirements. If you read this study, you can see what we've got to do, the amount of training we've got to have. And it's not like it was in nineteen eighty-nine. It's on the computer. There's question about my internet cost. Well, I tell you this, but Lower Burnington Town doesn't have DSL. It's not there. If I go back to the phone system, yeah, I can cut it. I can cut it ten dollars a month, but it takes me about six hours to download one fire call. What do I do with the two I had today? You know, let's just face it. You talked about infrastructure for the school board. Uh, we've let some things go down. The bridges are not there. The things are not kept up. We're trying to keep it up. We've been very frugal. Our cost per call for the rural fire departments, if you look at this study, is right down there in the lowest. I can't compete with Highlands. I can't compete with Franklin because they've got a lot more structures to protect. They've got a lot more value to protect. But if you look at what's required in here, I got to still have those same trucks. They've still got to pass the same pump test every year. They've still got to have tires on the front that are not five years old, and there's a stamp on them. In nineteen eighty-five, we didn't care. The tires may have been twenty years old. So, that's what I have to say. It's your decision. You control the budget. So, I'm here to answer any questions you may have, but those are the numbers.
Starting your discussion.
You're starting, you're late saying. Oh, I'll absolutely start. Ken, I appreciate, I've been involved, I mean, I've been involved lately, but I was on the fire department. We're not qu- I'm not personally questioning your internet calls. I'm questioning, why did we spend five hundred and fifty thousand dollars without apprising this board of that? The people have to face the taxpayers out here. We're the ones that vote these things tax increases in. The Burnington Fire Department doesn't. Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a substation, that's a record breaker in western North Carolina. Mr. Dillard, Chief Dillard in Glenville Caster's has built six of them. His most expensive one's a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, one he just completed. I can't, I cannot, and a lot of, you're talking about the public in Burnington Town, there's a lot of the public in Burnington Town that's upset with a fire department, with a rock facade, glass doors, upstairs, decks on it. Yes, we're, we're upset with it, Ken. And I think that is almost flagrant abuse of taxpayer dollars. Giving you credit, we certainly need to take Mr. Cave's recommendations and work on them. Great, great document. We need to start working to instill consistency in these fire departments. We, there's, this board has no protocol for approving requested tax increases from fire departments. I say here, four years ago, I lost that one. Uh, and there's, there's going to be some point when we keep expanding and paying more and more firemen, that's killing our volunteer effort. That creates animosity. Why should I go to a fire if Joe's getting paid for it? There's no way this community can afford a full-time fire department. We do need to take that document, absolutely, I agree with you, and work to get consistency in these fire departments. There's another substation being built, I understand, that's three quarters of a million dollars. What, it's, where does it, I mean, there's no consistency. We're going to vote on Burn- on Franklin's here in a minute. We're going to give them, they're wanting seven full-time firemen with paid dental, paid health, paid town of Franklin retirement program. Do your paid firemen get that? Some departments get paid fire calls, some departments don't. What are we going to do to instill consistency, or are we just going to sit here as an elected body representing taxpayers? And every time somebody comes to the place saying, hey, I need, I need another raise, I need a, and now I think the adjustment is going to be at one point, we're going to a ten point nine is the recommendation of the chairman. That's a ten mil. That's one-third of the property tax that I pay. And I hear the saying, oh, we've got the lowest property tax in western North Carolina. No, we don't. Uh, when you add in ten, twelve, or thirteen mils, we have to get some consistency in these fire departments. And my, 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 I would like to see everything tableed, which would force us to get, to get to the, get in a circle here and start working this out. What are we going to do? It is a vital service. And Mr. Bill says it's the best bargain in, in the county. It may very well be. But there's so much disparity, so much inconsistency, that it's, it's almost laughable. When do we sit down and try to get consistency in rural fire departments in Macon County? And I'm not one to sit here and just every year, a department or two come up, and me with no established protocol to vote increase the, my constituents' rate, uh, taxes, I can't do it. I can't do it without some protocol. And just come in and say, hey, we, we build a fire department out there, costs five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Holy cow. What, what, what was the logic? I can't, I can't find it. I can't explain it to my constituents. But I can't explain to them why I cannot support a tax increase without some protocol to fund that. So, that's, I didn't mean to get off on something there, but I'm not questioning the little things. It's these big things, Ken. I just, I can't get, I can't fathom. Well, I can. When I was on that fire department, for the reason I resigned, we had a twenty-five thousand dollar a year budget. And every time there was a particular fireman wanting to buy a two hundred thousand dollar truck, I got tired of fighting with it. And I just said, take it and run with it. And that's, that's my logic, Ken. It's nothing personal against you. It's nothing. But these are not going to be, they cannot afford to be paid departments. And it's just, it, the poor people of Burnington Town certainly could not afford it. We're taxed now. I get zero pers- zero then decre- decrease in my fire tax. I'm paying four hundred, almost four hundred dollars a year in fire tax. I get zero insurance savings. And I know you gave some numbers the other night, that must have been some other range. Mine's State Farm. I've been out there and visited with them twice. Now, you're saying that, given this increase, you will work to lower your rating. Well, it's been there twenty-eight years, and we've gone from a nine to an eight B. And I'm in the private sector in the world. If I want a reward, I want to perform. So, if you, if you get your rating decreased, then certainly come back to this board, would be my opinion. But that's an incentive for you to work to get that decrease for your, your, so, you know, your people in Burnington Town, though. But me, for one, my, my opinion's going to be, I'm not voting for any, anything closer to, I can't, I cannot fathom a twenty-something percent of tax increase. I just, I can't do it. It goes against every, every bone in my body. So, that's where I stand at. And I think it's important that we get that document, the wave there, get Mr. Cave and interested parties around the table and work to unify and get some consistency in these, in these rural fire departments. Thank you.
Anybody else? You want me to go?
Would you sure, Tom?
All right, Paul, I agree with you in principle. Uh, our fire departments provide an excellent, excellent service. Uh, I would, I would not hesitate at all to live in any district in Macon County and have these volunteers protect my, my family's life and my, and my property. Is the system broken? Yes. Are we trying to address it? Yes. Is it going to be an overnight address? No. Is it going to probably take a year? Probably a lot longer than that to get it addressed. So, uh, in the meantime, uh, these, these departments are still running calls, are still increasing calls, are still running through the day-to-day difficulties if they have. And I, I, I have a fear of hamstringing them until we can get a decision made, if we can come to a conclusion. I know this staff out here is working really hard on it, and that document that they've got started is, uh, is, is a good start. And I got to give Mr. Kent kudos for initiating this project and getting it started, and recognizing what's going on, and listening to us, uh, where we're going. The Aspire Task Force that we're looking at this year is, uh, one of the first steps in Warren's game plan on how we're going to handle this. So, with that being said, uh, I was going to suggest, not a full increase, Ken, but I was going to suggest a partial. I felt like there was some things, when I reviewed your budget, uh, that weren't necessary, what I, what we felt like for reducing, uh, your insurance ratings. And I was just going to make the suggestion, again, we're up for discussion, just my thoughts. I was going to make the suggestion that we provide the increase, but put it with some stipulations and basically, uh, give you some incentive that if you can, uh, reduce your insurance ratings to a, a seven, which according to the Office of State Fire March, Office of the State Fire March will actually be a greater decrease to someone that owns, uh, an increase to someone that owns a hundred thousand, am I saying that right? If you have a hundred thousand dollar home, and you get your insurance ratings to a seven or a six, it's going to be a greater savings than what the tax increase will be. So, it'll actually be a savings to the homeowner. So, I was going to suggest we give it to you, uh, a partial of what you're asking for, less eight thousand dollars, and that we do this with a stipulation that you lower your insurance ratings. If not, when we come back to this budget next year, we're going to bring you back to where you are currently, because you haven't given any benefit necessarily for the increase in the tax. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Well, it will, but there will be a benefit to those who are, when we get this station. And we cannot control when OSFM comes out here to do the inspection. We would have appeared here had we had those inspections last fall or last spring.
I know it was scheduled, it was scheduled for this fall.
It's been cut twice. It was last spring, then it was reduced to this fall. Now, it's next spring. We don't have control over that.
Right. And I think that would be a good.
So, you can say next spring, if they move it again, we may come back without it.
If you can have inspection, you can't help that. But if you can have it, it would be a good.
But it's going to save the ones, and, and there are insurance companies that give a decrease, and it's in this study, from the nine to the eight B, there are some homes that are can or uninsured that are beyond that five-mile district. They can't get insurance. They will be able. So, there is a benefit to this increase in this substation being operable. Speak a little bit to Paul's concern about that station. It's not a metal, metal Butler building. Yeah, we could have stuck a eighty thousand dollar two-bay garage out there. Number one, it wouldn't have been pleasing to the eyes and the community, the ones we leased that property from, was the Baptist Children's Home Society. They had some input into what they wanted. They wanted it to fit into the community, into the structure. We got bids on that. That was not the three-quarter million dollar bid that we got, was not the one we accepted. Uh, we talked about that before. That station is designed where it can be, as the community grows, it can be added on to. If we do have to man the station, we'll have some accommodations in it where we can have the meetings, community meetings, the backup generator. It may well, in the future, become the main station for that area, because that's where the population center is. That's where the school is, that's where the churches are. You know, there are some other churches that are near the other station, but, uh, it's designed to be added on to. Those of you that have visited, I think Carl came out one day, and we walked through the station. And I think he understands that it's designed where it can be added to when future needs occur. And in twenty years, it's not going to be obsolete. Should be able to be maintained. So, yeah, it's going to cost a little more to make something that's, that's worthwhile. I'm sure this oak paneling in this boardroom and this desk costs more than just leaving the sheetrock that was up there, too. But it'll be there for a long time.
Ken, has any other thoughts?
I'm going to finish, you lead.
I, if you're, the rest of it just basically has to do with that, Ken, that I had on my list. Just asking that you work with the county staff to reduce your ISO ratings. And, uh, the last item that I had on here was to, uh, in, in an effort to help, uh, I think what Paul's getting at in his overall jest, to save taxpayers as much money as possible. I think it would be, just from my knowledge of what goes on, uh, in, in the, the, your largest adjoining district line, which is with Calwe, I think it'd be, a very good idea if you and Calwe could get together and, uh, see if, what, what's the best possible solution, where y'all could work together to potentially save those taxpayers money, whether it's moving lines, whether it's working together, whatever it might be, to help save, again, as I mentioned in our meeting last week, our, our number one goal up here, I think, is to see, uh, life safety, property safety, property, uh, protection for the best possible bang for the buck for the taxpayers. And I think that's what we all want. But I, I think that, and I'm going to ask other departments to do that as well. I think, again, your largest line probably joins Calwe, and I think it would be good to see those, y'all two work together to, uh, potentially, again, save the taxpayers some money. Those were the items that I had.
So, what tax rate are you recommending, gentlemen?
Uh, I was going to ask to reduce their total request to two hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars, which is basically eight thousand less than what they requested. It would be a new rate, uh, uh, of point one zero zero nine or point zero one four two.
Point zero one.
So, their tax rate would be point zero one four two, correct?
No, that would be the decrease. Ten point, ten point four six. Ten point four six was what they wanted. And you're saying you recommended ten point oh nine, which is a difference of.
That's correct.
Point one four two.
Point oh one four two, that's correct. I get it confused, because Highlands is of what, point zero zero nine?
Yeah.
So, that's a, that's a zero point zero one four two decrease.
In what they're requesting.
And then the original request.
That's correct.
Which amounts to eight thousand dollars.
Which amounts to eight thousand dollars.
Could, could you, uh, share your thoughts again?
Again, uh, let's, let's talk about the, the theory behind that eight thousand dollars and why, how we came up with that number. The theory behind that was, is when I wrote through your budget, I didn't want you coming back to me and saying, well, if you would, if you would have just given me that in my tax increase, then I could have made my insurance rating. So, I pulled out the generator, and I made another note there of something that, um, pulled those out. And I was like, you can't tell me that the generator was going to help you with your ISO rating. So, that's how I came up with that.
Makes the station fully functional. That's one of the items that we can get for high price through the.
Right.
State insurance grant, so.
Ken, assuming that you get the inspection, if it comes through in the spring and everything goes well, do you think getting to a class seven is feasible?
Yes.
Is it, is it a very, is it very feasible?
We've already acquired a service truck, another thousand-gallon tanker, pumper, to go in the station. It's passed all the pump tests, whatever, so we, we have that to, to put in that station, to get that station number one up and functioning. Uh, that'll save, like I say, using these numbers from this study, that'll save eighty-five, eighty-six hundred dollars to those taxpayers immediately, once that station gets up and gets inspected. And it will be, and that's assuming half of them insure a hundred thousand dollars worth of property. So, if they insure more than that, it'll be more than that.
And then you'll have some support, too, from, in, because in our budget, if and when it passes, you'll have the task force for support.
That's right.
So, that's, it'll be a real benefit to get that, that class seven, because that's, that's really the linchpin for, I think, from, for me, is, is what it's doing to have, if Paul says he's never got one in twenty-some odd years, then, you know, that's, that's, that's a big deal. That's huge. I mean, at the end of the day, you can't replace what y'all do, I mean, regardless about the insurance rate. But if you can get that and offset that, um, and as far as the five hundred and fifty thousand dollar building, it's, it's a very nice building, and it'll be there for years to come, five years from now, ten years from now, that same building would cost a million dollars. So, that's the way I look at that. So, uh, could you build it cheaper? Probably. Could, could I, could I build it cheaper? I don't know that. I doubt it. I wouldn't. So, you know, the building is what it is. It is where it is. And, and you had, what if you had to buy the land? You know, so, uh, so I think it, it'll serve the community for a long, long time, as the airport continues to grow, just for the airport alone.
Warren, what is, uh, just, I know Colosseum just went through theirs. What is their ratings now, their insurance ratings?
Four or five.
They went to a four or five, so, potentially.
They're a five now.
Do what, Jim?
They're five, five to five mile.
In the notes we took today, in the notes we took today, if you could get to a class, uh, six, then, uh, according to this, a hundred thousand dollar home would save two hundred and thirty-six dollars annually off what they're paying currently. And you're asking for an increase of a hundred and four dollars and sixty cents per hundred thousand, so.
It's a, it's a benefit, and, you know, it takes a lot of training, a lot of work on part of the department to get there. It takes the cooperation of the joint entire departments. Our automatic aid is Franklin and, and Calwe. And so, for the water shuttle and whatever, we don't have hydrants. So, for water shuttle, we're dependent on them. So, we do work together. Uh, we worked with Calwe when they got their rating down. We worked with Franklin when they were getting their rating down. We expect the same cooperation. I think we have cooperation.
You said your call grew up what, Ken, what percentage?
Well, last, last year, they were a total of forty-two. Well, last, last year, they were a total of forty-two percent. We went from a hundred and seventy-seven to two hundred and fifty-one.
That's medical empire.
Medical empire, and year to date, we were at eighty-six, last year we were seventy-one, that's another twenty-one percent they've gone up in this, at this point in time.
Just this fiscal?
This, this fiscal year, and that was as of last week, that's, that couple of calls, but I don't know what the number was at this point last year.
Did you get your C O, Ken?
Their builder has come up with a letter for the fire model, still won't understand what he said this morning, he said we couldn't do the inspection, but that's the only thing that's not done, is out there, you can explain that better than I can.
Fire doors, they, they removed the labels on the fire doors, and the process paint, or something like that, so they took the doors off, supposedly sent them back to the factory to get them, get them re-certified, they came back with few labels on, but they've gotta have a letter stating that they did go back to it, and that they do meet those laws, Ken.
Can't make that, and as far as I know, that is all, but that's not the department.
So they don't have a C O?
I was told that letter should be here tomorrow. No, that happens.
Okay, so.
Thoughts? Kenneth, I think, sitting here listening, you know, some of the, a lot of the discussions up here is about an issue far greater than a rate increase for your department, and, and I will echo the other comments that's been made, I think there's some room for improvement there. You know, and I think, I think we can get there, I think we have a plan in place to get there. It's not gonna happen this year or next year, so the services are gonna continue to be required, and, and it's, it's, it's up, this board's tasked with, with making sure that that's funded at appropriate level. To me, that's, that's kind of the easy part. What, what concerns me, and I guess a year and a half ago, I went to my first fire chief's meeting, and there were several quizzing me pretty hard about what I knew about firefighting and fire departments, and that was pretty easy to figure out. In my adult life, I've called nine one 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 time, and there was three men showed up immediately at my house on Corbin Road, which some consider not to be located close to town. They took care of our needs, one guy got a little mud on the carpet and said he'd come back in his, when he could and clean the carpet, and I assured him that that wouldn't be necessary. So my concern, my bigger concern, is what's gonna happen in ten years, hopefully I won't have to call, but just, probably I will, in ten years, when I'm sitting on Corbin Road and I call, who's gonna come? Who's, who's gonna be there to come? And, and I think, you know, for me, that, that needs to be the big picture, what, what we need to look at, is who's gonna come and how they're gonna be, what, what's that structure gonna be, and, and I think now probably is the time when that, that discussion is started.
Instead, we have a tough time recruiting and getting, keeping members, and we get good ones and they move on.
The chairman is, is for Warren, you know, with the proposal that the chairman has put forth, we would, and I think it would be something that we would hand to the task force, and they would, that would be their duty to, to get with Ken and, and say, you know, this is, you know, this is what we, this is what, you know, if this should pass, this is what, would that be, am I thinking right?
I thi, I think it's just emergency staff, whether it's the task force, but I think it'd just be emerg, emergency management staff handling, I thought of a, a number eight too, Ken, no offense, but I added an eight thing if this does go tonight, and that's, in my opinion, I don't think, I think it's a conflict for you to be treasurer, I think we've had this discussion, treasurer of the board and chief of the department, I think that that should be an easy fix, so.
Well, I'm really interim treasurer, we have had treasurer resign because of health department last fall, before that, we had a treasurer just resign from the department, and we had a person that was treasurer for about a year, and I've ended up filling in between, but we've got July one, and we've got another person coming on as treasurer. You're welcome to look at the books anytime you want to.
No, 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 not accuse you of anything.
We meet on Thursday night, we're open, you can come in on Thursday night, and we sit there, and if you wanna look at them, you.
That's for your protection too.
That's right.
So is this your recommendation, Mr. Chairman?
That was my recommendation, obviously Paul has revealed on it too, so that's why we have a board.
I used to win an argument, Jimmy.
So with, with the recommendation of, of the chairman, I'd like to make a motion that, that would go with, to provide Burnington Fire Department with the stipulations as outlined, including number eight, and that would be to, to set the new tax rate at zero point one zero zero nine for the Burnington Fire Department, and with the stipulations as outlined, which will be presented and included in the minutes. And that's a motion.
Do you, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
And part of the stipulation that you would come from a nine to a seven?
Yeah.
I just couldn't describe it.
Is that, you, you didn't get this, you?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second, is there any?
Got it.
I've got an extra one right here.
Someone's got it right there.
I've got it, I've written all over it.
From the back side of the survey.
I've written all over it.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor in a second, any further discussion, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Board to one, Mike. Thanks, Chief. Franklin Fire Department, anybody else wanna go first, or I have a suggestion on that too?
Can you get a copy of this?
I can't, it's privileged.
Yeah, I've got an extra one. We did add a number eight on that there.
I'll put it on right here.
We know that.
Can you go over number eight again?
That Ken is acting as interim treasurer, and just for Ken's protection.
Board of directors, and he's also chief of the department.
Yeah.
Probably shouldn't be both.
And that should say decrease into the increase there. Ken, on the top.
You got it.
Eight K.
You got it. All right, my same theory with Franklin Fire Department's increases, all of you know from the past testimony, Franklin by far runs the majority, the most calls in the county, they, they probably run just about as many as most of the other departments, rural departments combined, and they're looking to add some additional members, are they going, they just went through, they have the lowest ISO ratings in the county at three, four, if I remember right, but I also suggested that we agree to their increase, I had a few suggestions on what they need to do in return. Number one is I understand they have a very large, there were some questions the other night on how they fund their retirement, I understand they have a very large relief fund, I think it'd be good for us to know that amount and for it to be public record. Also suggest that they provide us with a capital plan of how they're gonna be spending those funds as they move forward. I also suggest that they develop a, a plan of making county emergency services by January first, to provide coverage to their class nine, ten areas. Yes, they have the lowest insurance ratings in the county, it's in three, four areas, but they also have some areas that are outside, and as I mentioned to Chief McCaskill a minute ago with Burnington, about getting with Cowee and trying to work out some of their differences, I also think the Franklin Fire District could do the same thing with theirs, and if I'm not mistaken, I think they actually have, in Mountain Valley's Fire Department, doesn't it sit inside of Franklin's Fire District?
The building itself is actually out, the property around it is inside.
And the nine, ten areas that they presently have are along Cowee's border and along, where else?
High Grove and Mount Grove.
So that would be Colosseum?
Cowee.
Okay, so I was also gonna suggest that they start working on how they can provide better insurance ratings for those areas, whether it's giving that, that area to another department, or substations, or wherever they might decide to do that, and then I think we need proof that they are providing the service that they said they're going to, which is provide proof of two persons twenty hour, twenty-four hour coverage by October first. Any questions?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't see comparative burn down if there's no penalty, I don't see no penalty here if they do not do these things.
That's a good point.
So.
If we can tell them the same thing, they'll take it back.
I mean, I mean, if they, if there's, do you think it's necessary, Warren, I mean, I, I don't.
Honestly, I think if you tell, if you tell them that we're gonna take the increase back and we give them those goals, and say, we'll give it to you contingent upon these goals, I think we need to tell them the same thing, if they don't think this goal is, I think we need to.
These are not complex goals, Burnington's got a lot more work to do.
Yeah, Burnington's got a lot more goals, but I, I still think if you're gonna, if you're gonna penalize, you're gonna say, this is your penalty, and, and we're gonna start down this road, like Paul said, if we're gonna start, if we're gonna start making a headway and categorize these things, we should make it across the board.
And it, and it needs to be open enough that if we look at those class ten areas, it, it may not be financially viable to put a substation there, we, we may not be able to afford a two hundred thousand dollar building there, as long as people can still get insurance, it may be, they'd be better off to not have one there, but we need to at least look at that to see if that's, that's.
Well, that's a four hundred, hundred thousand dollar building, I was opposed to hagging there, those are guidelines we need to set, somebody has to set, I'm not the guy who has to toe on it, so, pretty easy.
I mentioned quantity of calls run, just for reference, last year, Burnington ran, this is number of fire department responses, two hundred and fifty-one, Franklin ran two thousand two hundred and thirty calls, if you think about that per day, and you can understand why they, you know, probably didn't.
Has mutual laid up those numbers any, what percentage would you say that this recent mutual aid agreement has done to fire calls?
I'd have to look at Franklin's, but theirs is one of the highs because of their central location, because they go all geographical directions, Burnington's gonna be lower because they're kind of boxed in, and they don't have the couple geographical directions they could go somewhere else, but Franklin's probably has the highs.
Still gotta go.
And there's a pretty strict protocol on what you respond to.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna respond automatic aid on structured fires, anything that's a, same structured fires, what they're gonna automatically do, and you're gonna get two, you get a primary department, and you'll get two of what we call automatic aids right off the menu.
Highlands is actually, Casser's is their first, I actually pulled from other county.
Those numbers.
I would wanna pull from Casser's.
Yeah, they got them.
Those, those numbers of people that are, what we call automatic aids to the mutual aid, when they automatically go, those manpower numbers are what adds up to get your inspection lower, when you go to OSFM inspection for your rating, those are the ones that can't, that's why you have those certain, certain ones responding, and there's a clause in their contract that says what they have to bring, so that's what's to account for.
In that picture, and that's.
I agree.
Uh, did you two run?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Maybe we just made to mention that we're gonna put Burnington under stipulations or input Franklin under stipulations.
What, consistency?
Yeah, exactly.
Again, we're looking at a twenty-two percent increase, and, and Summers did have a great presentation, I'm not kicking, there's no personal in this thing, but another twenty-two percent increase in tax, fire tax, whatever kind of tax, I don't care, it's a twenty-two percent increase. Wow, we have no protocol, we, again, no protocol, this board doesn't. And Franklin's request is the gold standard, I wrote this down, it's the gold standard when you come to fire departments, volunteer, or paid firemen, maybe not as, I didn't look at the salary, I looked at the benefits, this county's gonna authorize to pay those firemen health insurance, dental insurance, town of Franklin retirement, we don't even offer our county employees dental insurance, this is setting a precedent, if we approve, I mean, obviously this will be approved, but that's the thing with being inconsistent, is once we set a precedent, and all these are precedent, precedent-setting motions we're hearing, once you set a precedent, why, why does the guy in Iowa, Burnington Iowa, why can't that fireman not get insurance? He gave it to Franklin, why can't, what is, what's the justification? I don't see it, it's precedent-setting. Again, that's all I have, I cannot support a twenty percent tax increase for any, for any purpose. And we are putting a quarter million dollars into a new department, a fire task force, to help get these things in line, that's gonna run our total fire bill up to, and it should be funded by the tax, it should be funded out of the general fund, that should eventually next year or two, be funded out of the fire tax, that's what its purpose is, that throws us up to about three and a half million dollars a year in, in fire tax, so.
What's even more amazing about this increase, if you didn't understand what Mr. Latner said, it's mostly paid by those of us who own property and the ETJ.
Paid to somebody.
Vast majority is paid by not people inside the city, paid by those people and the ETJ. Who don't even vote, can't even vote in the town.
Can't make it up.
Can't make it, but.
You gotta vote.
They provide a lot of people.
You gotta vote.
They're gonna vote here, but I don't have a vote in town.
This is more important.
But, so let's talk a little bit about how you wanna word the penalty, Mr. Chairman, report back to this board in January, if, if these have not, have been met, the, the tax rate will be, uh, on the penalty of the tax rate being reduced back to the original amount?
I agree.
You can't do that.
In the new budget.
In the new budget, you can.
Yeah, you can't change.
You're adjusting your tax rate, you're letting it.
The following years, but. The following years, you could adjust it.
I agree. Is that fire one?
I actually prefer if, if instead of you quoting the tax rate, you would say, we're gonna, like, don't quote me, but Burnington's increase, whatever it was, from a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty-one to two hundred and thirteen, which is thirty some odd thousand dollars. My preference would be, if you give them a dollar increase, you're gonna take the dollar increase away, rather than saying, we're gonna cut the tax rate back to a certain mileage.
So just, just say the increase would be.
The increase will be negated.
Negated.
If you have growth and stuff all during the year.
The tax increase would be negated.
That same mileage rate will give you a different dollar figure this time next year. My, my preference is to work those based on dollar figures.
But the mileage would be the same, even though you have the increase in your, in your base.
The mileage rate stays the same, but if we say we're gonna take it from, say Burnton's ten point oh nine back to eight.
Six.
Six, seven, next year, they may have growth in there, which is gonna automatically build in growth into that budget, so you're not technically taking away the same amount of money you're taking away.
It'd be having some rebounds.
I sound like a judge.
That's right. Revaluation could make a huge change.
That would accomplish.
No.
That was based on the mileage, not on dollars.
Well.
At Burnington, y'all said dollars, didn't you?
We said dollars.
Thirty-one.
Well, we said the difference between, right?
The, the difference between.
And that's what you're saying on this one too?
Yeah.
As of today?
Yes.
That's what, that's what we're talking about now.
Let's run.
It's going from point oh eight six seven to point one oh oh nine for Burnington. Now Franklin's a penny.
Questions, comments, which direction are we headed?
I'm ready, you ready, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, I, based on your recommendation, I make a motion that we approve the Burnington request as presented with the caveat.
Franklin.
Franklin, who, does that say Burnton, we, I'm Franklin, that's why we're, Franklin proposal as presented with the caveat, to report back to this board in our meeting in January of two thousand eight. Franklin proposal as presented with the caveat that he report back to this board in our meeting in January of 2008, taking the full report. And that if the stipulations outlined has not been met, that the difference between the current rate and the current rate they give with the tax increase, they will be asked that be reimbursed in the next budget cycle.
I'm sorry. Further discussion?
Be reimbursed or just negated?
Negated, negated is the right word.
I think reimbursed is better.
And just to clarify, that tax rate is point zero five four five, which is one penny above the current rate. That's what I have from our last meeting.
Point zero...
Five four five.
Yes, point zero five four five.
Yes. Yes, point zero five.
Difference is an increase of one penny.
One ten.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one again, Mr. Dr. All right, moving right along. Four, do you have a copy of this? Do you have a copy of what? Request from Macon County Public Library. Welcome back. Karen.
I'll try to be very brief.
Thanks for allowing us to appeal and ask you to reconsider the recommendation for the library. Wanted to just mention a couple of things. When Derek presented his recommendation a couple of weeks ago for the county budget for the coming fiscal year, he noted that there's been an overall cost, overall increase in the cost of doing business for Macon County and for everybody. And that's true for the library as well. We're looking at the fifth year of staying at the same level of funding from Macon County, and over that period of time, there has been inflationary increase of at least 5% consolidated increase. So we would ask you to consider at least to keep us at the same buying power, because our costs have gone up in personnel, our costs have gone up for materials, our costs have gone up in all of our operating costs. The other thing that Derek mentioned was that Macon County had invested in their most valuable asset, and that is its employees. Macon County's implemented a compensation plan that has allowed Macon County to be regionally competitive. The library would like to be able to reward its employees as well. That's the bulk of our request for the increase, is indeed to reward our employees who serve Macon County citizens every day. Derek mentioned that education is a priority. And listening to the discussions tonight, I know you have a lot to wrestle with when it comes to formal education. But I ask you to remember that the library is there for people lifelong, whether they're enrolled in a formal education program, whether they're preschool, whether they're school age, whether they're in higher education, or whether they're not involved, enrolled in a formal education program at all. We hope that Macon County citizens will continue to learn throughout their lives, and the library is a resource for them to do that throughout their lives. We provide a level of service throughout our county in three facilities, in Nantahala and in Highlands and here in the Franklin area, and we do that for less than $30 a person. Last time you bought a book, maybe even an ebook, $30 is the average price of a print book. So you can buy one book, or you can have all of the things that the Macon County Library provides to you for that cost for a year. So we think we're a pretty good bang for the buck. And we'd ask you to consider an increase to the library in order to reward our employees and to continue serving the people of Macon County with the excellent service that we provide. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Karen. I'll, I'll start.
Okay.
I, I can't disagree with anything you just said at all, period, can't disagree. I do have a question. You mentioned, basically what we're spending, what your county citizen spends, and so it was just under $30
Yes, sir.
for library services. When you compare that to some of the surrounding counties, and a lot of them across the state, that's fairly high. Is there a reason for that? Is it, just give me, give me your thoughts on that.
Well, there are a couple of things there. One is how many facilities we have. So we have three facilities. So if you look at neighboring counties, in Jackson County, for instance, which is a very similar county, they only have two facilities. So right off the bat, we've got a third facility. We're open more hours than the Jackson County Library, combined hours of the three facilities that we have. We, you know, a lot of expense for employees, and that is where the majority of our expense is, goes into how we are providing the level of service that we are. So when people have needs that relate to digital needs, for instance, they don't know how to use a new laptop or a new tablet or a new phone, or they don't know how to get an email address, that's a fairly labor-intensive process for which we provide assistance to the people of Macon County who come in for that. So there are many libraries who, what they provide are books, and we provide that, too. But if you're gonna help people find and evaluate the information or the resources they need, learn how to use new tools, learn how to compete in a very changing world, then it takes more money than just checking out a book. So some of those costs go into having more people on staff so that we are able to assist the needs that we see, that our board has evaluated and adopted in our new goals and objectives for our long-range plan. Okay.
Question, Carl?
Yes, thank you. Couple of questions. This little handout that you gave us last time, it lists...
Right, that, that actually comes from Derek.
You may be able to better answer this. Sixteen seventeen Macon County Water Sewer Bill, forty-two hundred and nine dollars. That was for just this facility here?
Yes.
Okay. Then we've got Macon County Electric Bill, twenty-seven thousand one thirty-five there. Again, that's just for this facility.
And the one in Nantahala as well, I think. If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, 'cause we, we gotta play the utilities out of our operating budget. That's correct.
Hudson Library, Garbage Water and Sewer Bill, eleven thousand five eight four. That's all paid to the town of Highlands?
J and B disposal would get the garbage collection.
Okay.
Correct.
Off the top, you ever remember what percentage that, that garbage is?
I sure don't, Carl.
Has, has there ever been any discussions between the library and the town of Highlands about working something out on the water and sewer bill? 'Cause it seems like there would be some benefit to the town of, that library to be there. Is that discussion?
They, they wa, there was a discussion in, in, but what they, it's sort of like our enterprise fund with the...
It's the enterprise fund, yeah.
With the, with the man thing. They said if we do it here, they have some, they got every church down the line. They'd have to do the same thing, and they, if you do it with one, you gotta pass it on down the line.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, that figure for the town of Highlands is all inclusive, because the town does water, sewer, power. And they might even provide internet there now. I know the town's still internet.
No, not to that library, no. We provide that through Fontana, and thankfully, we qualify for E-rate discounts in order to provide internet and connectivity for the people in Highlands, because otherwise, it would be a really tricky thing to do. Very expensive.
The total request this year was what?
Uh, one point...
Right, a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, little bit over, hundred, a hundred and five. So a million. The majority of that is indeed for, for raises, for employees, and...
Your employees have some of the best benefit package. We talked about the benefit package for firemen. Your employees are right there with them.
Right.
When they have wonderful benefit packages.
It is excellent. It is indeed an excellent benefit package.
Early wage.
Mm-hmm. It does increase the value, absolutely. Sadly, not, not...
Especially now.
Less than half of our employees are either eligible or accept our benefits package, so, right, yeah.
Even some of them are getting it, thirty hours. So that's pretty good. I don't know, no, no place that works thirty hours that gets benefit.
And we, increasingly, we are removing those positions. You either work forty hours or you drop below thirties and you're not eligible. Yeah. It, well, it's a practical decision.
Did you ever go out and look at insurance rates?
Oh, we have, we have, mm-hmm.
We talked about that.
Yeah, yeah. We have looked at a number of providers. Small pool makes it a little difficult, so.
Make sure I understand. Part-time, there are part-time positions at the library that are benefiting.
I think so. There was.
So at thirty hours a week, we offer medical benefits. At this point in time, I think we probably have, we only have one or two people in that category, and only because they've been with us long enough that when we began to change that policy of forty hours or you drop below, we're not gonna take away their insurance. So it is moving forward and has been our practice for at least two to three years. As, as everybody has seen, the cost of, of health insurance go up, we're just trying to be practical and reasonable about the way we do things.
So of the twenty-nine employees, how many currently receive that benefit, the full benefit package?
Of Macon County employees? Or in Fontana?
Well, I have written down, there's fifteen full-time and fourteen part-time.
That was when the chairman was here the other night.
Right, right, right.
So of those twenty-nine, how many are fully benefited employees?
Well, then, there's a difference between being eligible and actually taking those, those benefits, 'cause I've got two who don't take the benefits that they're entitled to. So of the people that were, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. We have fifteen people on our, our insurance.
Okay. Out of, out of the twenty-nine?
Mr. Chairman?
Of the fourteen that's not insu, or... Of the, of the fifteen that's got the insurance, how many of those on thirty hours? You say two?
Uh, I have, we have one, and she's at thirty-six hours.
Okay.
So the only employee... So everybody else is forty hours. We have one at thirty-six hours. We don't have anyone getting benefits, working between thirty and thirty-six hours, and then only one at thirty-six hours.
That increase you're asking for is a hundred thousand dollars?
That's correct. And, and I would ask you to keep in mind that it's partly, in part, because we've not been receiving an increase over that same five-year period. So we've been receiving nine hundred ninety-nine thousand three hundred and ninety of recurring dollars for the past four years. This would, so as we look at the coming fiscal year, that would be our fifth, fifth year. So it is a sizable increase. I absolutely agree. And in part, it is because we've been struggling without having an increase for five years.
We have something many thirty years, twice.
Yep, mm-hmm.
And in the past four years, we, we've suffered many four times.
And we're very grateful for that, because that's how we replace some of our computers. We still have computers running XP, but fewer of them. But we'd like to replace some of those as well, so.
People there today.
Yes, there were, yeah, yeah. It's a busy place.
I defer everything to Mr. Bill. He was the liaison for years, but a lot of times in, in departments, we see Mission Creek or turf protection. Is there, and you, and I appreciate, I'm not belittling the services
I understand.
that you provide and your employees, it is, it is a great resource. Every town has a great library, but has a library, may not be as great as ours, but at some point, and I know you're bored and I've been to only one meeting, I'm not a good liaison, will it ever occur, do you think, that you might decrease to save money your area of services that you offer the public? I mean...
That is absolutely feasible, yeah.
We ob, I mean, are we obligated to provide this many of laptop computers, I mean, desktop computers to the general public? And some of the other services, and you do have a wide range of services, you know, the cameras for the wildlife counts, uh...
Connectivity meetings to help people understand the complexity of trying to get high-speed internet to their homes.
Yeah, I mean, it's broad-reaching, and I'm not saying it's not good.
Yeah.
But I, and I'm sure that you're bored because they're much more professional and knowledgeable than I am in providing these services, but you have had those discussions that is...
Absolutely.
are getting to the edge of our bounds, or whether that be financial bounds or what else could restrict you and how you expand. Just calling it up and asking, not looking for a response.
Okay. Well, our, our mission is to meet the needs of our citizens in the educational, informational arena. And so when we see that those needs are out there, we look for ways to meet those needs in the most cost-effective way that we can. And a lot of times, that's working with other agencies to be able to enhance and complement what they do so that we can help get the word out, so that we can help them achieve their, their goals and objectives, so.
There's not much overlap.
We try, you know, I, I had a consultant once who, who described what he called irrelevant excellence. You can do something really, really well, but if somebody else is doing it, it's irrelevant. So we try very hard to complement or enhance other things that people are doing rather than duplicate or make them redundant.
Realized you were talking to those questions that I asked you, but...
It's, they're important questions.
Where is the loan on the library? Where is that, where is that graph at? Do you know what the top you hit?
Are you saying when it pays out, pays off?
Yeah, when, when, where is it at? Do you know?
I don't know.
It's, should be on the bottom of that sheet, Carl, that...
It's not gonna say when it pays, he's not gonna know when it pays off.
Yeah. No, we don't say that again. From last fiscal year to this fiscal year, that number decreased by five or six thousand dollars. But, and I think it is at, in seventeen, eighteen... We're at sixteen, seventeen, we're at two eighteen, six fifteen. It was about two twenty-three in fifteen, sixteen. So we should be in the what year?
I don't know. That, y'all, looks like two thousand five was when y'all borrowed the money. I can't remember what the term was.
We can find that information out, please.
Yeah, I just don't have my debt schedule in front of me.
Because we always, you know, the premise was that when we built the new library, we'd try to keep the...
This is a library SCC campus. It pays off, uh, July, uh, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty?
Mm-hmm. July twenty twenty.
So that debt goes away?
Uh-huh.
Three years?
Three years.
In three years? That's...
Ronnie, what did you, what was you saying? The premise was, once it was paid off?
Well, what, I think when, when the new library was built, you know, if you look back from two thousand six to where the budgets had a million dollars, that's where it is. The budget said a million dollars. It's, and I think county, county's been there a long time, just try to, try to hold that around, around that million-dollar mark as long as possible. And, and remember, you're with, you're in with the, there's a, there's three of us in this, not just Macon County, Jackson County and Zane County.
Right.
If you look at what's being paid, Macon County has always paid more. Jackson County did give a little bump last year.
And this year.
And, and, but overall, Macon County, if you really drill down, Macon County still pays more per resident by far than any of the other two counties. So, you know, what, if county, we're not asking it to hold on, but it's whatever this board wants to do, but when that two hundred and eighteen goes away, I think that whoever's sitting at this... sitting at this would then can look certainly a whole lot more freely about increasing the library's funding, if that, once that debt load goes away, and, but that's another, you know, I thought, I thought it paid off next year for some reason. Now, I had it in my mind, but that'll probably, so, but, pleasure the board.
In your outreach program, are you sought out, or do you volunteer to go out?
Some of each.
Okay. What kind of expense thing is that?
Yeah, and I, I think we talked about that last time, and, and we are trying to compile data that actually gets to be able to answer your question, but right now, I really can't answer that.
And I, I think my other question, I think was answered, I just didn't know, between the schools and your programs, you had overlap, like the reading programs and things like that, if you had overlap?
Yeah, I, again, we try really hard to make sure that we're not duplicating services, so the, although, I, I believe the, the schools offer some summer programs for students who are in need of advancing their, their skills, we offer it to anybody and everybody. So, ours is voluntary, it's wide open, and for the most part, people are coming to us for those services. We do go out and provide services to some populations throughout the summer.
When the school's not going off usually?
Yes.
When the school's not in session?
Right.
If the debt load goes off in twenty twenty?
Twenty, July twenty twenty.
It says fiscal twenty-one.
Say again.
Fiscal year twenty-one.
Right. Be the first, first month of the fiscal year of twenty-one. I'll be fifty years.
For us, how many years?
I wasn't gonna ask that.
Comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, Ms. Wallace had mentioned, she's, she is a pleasure to work with during the budget process, and mentioned a couple of things with the county pay plan implementation. I, I would just like to add that the, that pay plan implementation, it, some sacrifices were made to be able to get that in and get that workable. The employees have had a, in Macon County, and I'm talking about things like a substantial reduction in the quality of health benefit that the employees receive here. That was one of the things, prioritizing some capital needs, and, and department heads really having to drill into their budget and into their operation and answer the question of what, what's important now. And, and still and yet, in doing that, like this year's budget, for instance, was the requested amount totaled fifty-four, fifty-five million dollars. And, if forty-nine million, forty-nine-five, of course, does not total fifty-five. But, it is doing those things, that, that postponing some capital needs. We're working this year to implement a capital improvement plan with facilities incorporated into it, which the library building, you know, we look for to be a, a part in that plan and play, and come in the development of that plan. And so, when, when you're looking at the budget overall, and, and as, as Commissioner Tate alluded to, I think about two percent of our budget goes to the library. When you take into the consideration the utilities and, and things that Commissioner Gillespie was referring to, I think that jumps that two percent on up a little closer to three. And, at, at right at thirty dollars a person in Macon County, you know, I, I said it once tonight about the school board, but I think the same holds true for the public library. When you look at other libraries, not only in the system, but across the state of North Carolina, just, I would like to say that it, you know, the, the board places high value on that, and, and it's evident when you look at how much of our budget really goes to the public library. And, it is an excellent working relationship, and, and just wanted to, for being involved in the process.
I appreciate it. And, you know, there is no question that a million dollars is a lot of money. We're not arguing that. It's just the same amount of money.
Yeah.
For five years.
And one point three's even, even more, when you look at everything, one point three.
Absolutely.
Alex.
I'm, I'm, no, I've got some questions.
We're gonna hold it flat, and we're gonna increase, we're gonna decrease, I guess those are the three options.
Yeah.
Pleasure the board.
I see.
Honey, Gary.
Well, but, uh, in last year, we reviewed this at the middle of the year, was that last year?
Yeah.
Yes.
We backed it some.
Twice during last year.
Right. We actually appropriated, one of that was at a contingency right near the end of the fiscal year, and that money was appropriated into our current fiscal year.
But, you're using it as for paying increases, not buying computers?
Uh, the seventeen thousand that we received last fiscal year by equipment.
Computers.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the hundred thousand, any of that used to buy equipment?
Yes, it is.
Can you tell me kind of what that is?
Uh, I've got about, let's take a look. We've got.
Probably, probably done my shift here.
We have about fifteen thousand dollars in the budget request for technology, new, new computers essentially, servers, probably no servers, but we do have some equipment that have to purchase to implement new Wi-Fi network to meet the demand of everybody who walks through the door. And, and we are eligible for E-rate discounts, and we do actively pursue those, but they're not free, there's still a cost to us.
And, so, in that information you just shared with me, you're talking about fifteen thousand dollars?
Give or take.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making mostly the budget as is, with all its options, to the list, and Ms. Wallace, come back, bring the needs and out for equipment, containing only Macon County.
Right. Question on the floor?
Say.
Leslie.
Now, when does this happen, this mid-year budget, or she would know?
Well, she can come back at any time after the new budget and then request something for equipment.
Okay.
Through the leads on Mr. Higgin.
Pardon? I'm sorry.
Mr. Higgin will bring it back.
Any further discussion? All in favor, seeing if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
It's for your consideration.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you talk about, hey, well, the library over there, got the leak in the mold or?
Derek technically.
Okay.
Mr. Brodner, Board of Health?
Jim, I'll lead in, as you were.
Sure.
Ben Chapel Hill, uh, last week, and I brought the concerns that the Board of Health voted unanimously on, uh, back to us, but there were some questions that I, I was stumbling through and had to answer, so I'm hoping that your expertise.
I'll stumble some too.
Will be able to help, uh, but I know, uh, one of the questions was, uh, the, the board voted as a priority, an individual, uh, that would basically work for you and your department, uh, for cleaning, sanitation, et cetera. And I think there were some questions of, about exactly what that person would do, about the specialized training, they'll help me out here. What were the other questions about what's, what's the difference between that?
We read the paper, and it was, apparently, the maintenance department wasn't doing no good. The county manager, uh, didn't know that, I didn't know nothing about it, none of us don't even know nothing about it. The chairman didn't have time to talk to us, so we just read it in the paper, so.
Yeah, we've had several conversations.
At the meeting, you wasn't here, but apparently you already had that discussion.
We've had that discussion, and.
So, you didn't communicate to your board that you had had that discussion?
Yes, sir, I did.
Yes. We're here for where we're at, that's what we've got questions about.
Yeah, that, what we're looking for is, we're not saying county maintenance is doing their job, they're cleaning the building. The problem is, is that we run a healthcare facility, and we have a different level or a different expectation by outside entities for either accreditation or other folks for what our cleaning standards should be for environmental cleanliness.
So, when did that change?
It's never changed, and.
They cleaned it for forty years, and it's been fine?
I have asked every budget year for the past four years for a position, and each year, it's gotten turned down. We've worked with the previous county manager, and we've had conversation with Derek to have conversation with county maintenance on changing the cleaning practices that they do in our building. The problem that we get back is that there's not enough manpower to do what we need to be done. Um, and that's where we sit, and we have had this conversation, we have not had this conversation with you, we've had this conversation in the Board of Health, and I have had it with, once, now twice, with Derek this year. Got pretty passionate in my meeting with him about it, when we had Lori and Lindsay in there, and my staff. Do I think we need it, yes, but when we, when we met to talk about the budget changes, we had asked for the largest increase we've ever had in health department budget in the ten years I've been here, about four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, it was. A lot of that was vehicles and other things, and we worked through that. Um, we got it down to about two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. When you add in the additional revenues, it takes it to about eighty thousand dollars in new county money that we're asking for. Derek and I met, Derek asked me what my three priorities were, of the challenges or cuts that were made, and we worked through that, and we figured out how to pay for the part-time physician time that we, that Derek had changed, we figured out how to pay the equipment maintenance component to some of the things we do, because we don't know when lab equipment or environmental health equipment is gonna go down, and how to pay for the lab certifications, and I felt those were the three priorities of the things that were presented by the manager that we needed to do. When I took that back to the Board of Health and explained to them what the changes and challenges were, what Derek and I had talked about, my comment to the board was that there was no need for the board to take any action at this time. The board then decided that there were other priorities, not Jim, the board then decided there are other priorities that they thought needed to rise to the, the level of the commissioners. Uh, one of those was the janitorial contract, uh, one was marketing funds, and the other one was phones, and they asked Commissioner Tate, they took a vote on all three of those issues, and here I am.
Jim, can you tell me, there was some discussion that happened about the animal control center too, with this, with this person, if we do fund it, would it be assisting there, or could the, could the county person that's currently cleaning here go to that facility and assist there?
Derek and I talked today, there, there are a lot of things that we could have county maintenance doing in this list of things that we need done. The places that we need, really need attention, are the clinical areas, and we've got that now down to about three thousand square feet of space that needs to be cleaned. And, there are different, if you read any of the CDC literature, you look at the best practices for cleaning in healthcare facilities, you look at OSHA, you look at everything that's out there, it's, there's a daily cleaning schedule, a weekly cleaning schedule, a monthly cleaning schedule. We've, I've produced them, I brought them for Derek tonight to give him before I leave here, of what we've shared with county maintenance over the years, and we need those things to be done.
And we rehash, just to rehash, I know the Board of Health, we discussed that night, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the figures, about potentially contracting that service, and we decided that it was cheaper to hire it within-house and contract it.
It would be cheap, for the amount of time that we need somebody, it would be cheaper to hire somebody part-time, to utilize them in-house to do that. The animal control piece, we can figure that out. We've, we've already had lots of conversation about animal control. Um, it's dental clinics, and it's the clinic space within the health department that we're concerned about. We do invasive procedures, we deal with people that are immune compromised, plunges that we need to be very cautious of, we've had conversations with our malpractice carrier about infection control, we just had a team in here the other day, uh, from the state, uh, that spent a day and a half going through our building. Um, we have issues, and we need to fix those issues. We've, they've been pointed out in accreditation, in the last two cycles that we've gone through accreditation, we haven't met the need, or the changes or the suggestions, uh, around quality improvement that they've given us on those things, and we're getting ready to go through accreditation again in September, and, uh, that's our funding.
Every four years.
Every four years, yeah.
Jim, if, make sure I understand, we're talking about these deficiencies in cleaning or defensy, deficiencies that county staff is, is, is not able to fulfill.
Correct.
And, but yet, we're talking about hiring somebody part-time, why would they be any more efficient at, at their deficiencies?
They'd be more focused, and they'd be able, we, we're looking at doing individualized training with that person that we haven't been able to do with county maintenance.
You tried that, it didn't work out.
No, sir.
Are we accredited right now?
Yes, sir.
Jim, when you say part.
Until September.
Sorry, when you say part-time, would that be nineteen hours a week, or thirty hours a week?
Somewhere between thirty and thirty-six hours, and look at it as a contract position, not a county benefited.
Oh, a contract.
This is a contract position, this is not a county benefited position.
Through the alliance.
Through the alliance.
So, we, so we're accredited, but they put, they preferred you do this?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, did you say thirty to thirty-six hours per week?
That's what we're estimating, about thirty to thirty-six hours a week.
Through the alliance, not a county.
Through the alliance, not a county employee.
It was twenty-eight thousand something.
Twenty-seven, eight seventy-four is what we had in the budget.
Do you think you could instruct somebody from the county manager to be trained to do this?
Jim, can you give thirty, thirty-second dissertation on the accreditation and its value to the health department?
The value to the health department is accreditation is in the general statute that every health department in the state, or a health department, has to be accredited, or we don't get our state money. And that state money also means federal block grant money, which is everything. No, it's not everything, but it's a good, it's close to a million dollars a year for us.
The county employee that you can instruct, which manager?
I think our maintenance staff cleaned the Taj Mahal. I think they'll do, they, again, I'll say, and I'll, I'll say to the, to the end, I think we have a great maintenance staff, I think they do a great job. And, you know, I, I understand if there, if there's been, we went through two accreditation cycles that you mentioned, and both times, we've received accreditation?
Both times we've been accredited, but both times we've gotten a quality, in the quality assurance blocks, they've told us what, what we need to fix. And, we're not saying county maintenance can't do it at all, we're saying that county maintenance isn't staffed in that building to do it. I don't care if the money comes to the health department, or the money goes to county maintenance, and I've said that before, we've had that conversation. We need more staffing in our building in order to accomplish the things that we need to accomplish. If you look at the square footage of the building, and you look at what DSS has, and, and you, you hate to care, you know, look, compare departments that way, and you look at what we have, we have the same amount of cleaning staff as they have, and they have a building that's a third of ours. They do not have the clinical or the other aspects of the cleaning to be done over there that we need to be done on our side of the building. We're just understaffed. That's the bottom line.
It's the same, the same building.
Same building, but they segregate the maintenance staff in the building.
So, what, you spoke in here about your nurses having to handle tasks that should fall under janitorial, uh, it's, it's hard to get nurses in it.
It, it's very difficult to get nurses, and when you add that they've gotta clean floors and other things, beyond, we're not talking the day-to-day cleaning, like somebody gets seen in an exam room, and we change the paper, and we wipe down the exam, you're talking about the stuff that goes beyond that. The, the things that we deal with in the health department, I wanna be careful how I say this, but the things that we deal with as, as a health facility, they don't die off when you wipe with bleach. You know what I mean? They're there for days, and day, some of them can last for years on the surface, and.
Do we have the supply, we, do we have the supplies in stock right now that, that are required to clean this, these facilities?
I can't answer that, because I don't know what Steve Lefter cleans, what the county maintenance staff cleans, but they won't tell us. They won't share that with us.
They won't share what they clean?
They won't share what products they use. We've been down that road to try and have conversation about the products that they use, and been shut down.
You know what they need?
Yes, sir, we do.
Is it just, and then at that point, it's, it's applying these products instead of?
It's applying those products, but it's applying things more frequently. Um, you know, a simple requirement like wiping down doorknobs every day, it doesn't get done.
And at, at the same point, though, you know, if, if the nurses are the ones in and out of that clinic, and we have maintenance staff over there, you can't expect a maintenance staff. staff, maintenance staff to come and wipe a doorknob every time somebody goes out a door.
You're not expecting it every time.
I mean, it's got to be some of that is expected to be put on the staff that is in there, in these offices every day.
And, and they...
Wiping down the counters, wiping down the doorknob, I mean, certain things of that nature, but now, whenever, what did I say, do they not wipe the counters and stuff?
They, they do the day-to-day cleaning in between patients like they're supposed to do. The problem is, is that's not the level of cleanliness or cleaning that needs to occur in a health facility. It needs to go beyond the day-to-day cleaning.
Is it the product that's not...
Part of it is the product, well, I don't know the answer to that, because I don't know what Steve, what the county maintenance uses.
So it could be we're using the right product?
It could be they're using the right product. We're not saying anybody's using the wrong product. We're just saying there's not enough manpower in the building to meet the cleaning needs of the building. And it's not just us, it's also adult dental. They come in one day a week to adult dental, one day a week. And the staff in there, we're paying dental hygienists to clean a building every day and haul out the trash, every day. And those areas, if you look at any of the literature from CDC or anybody, they're mopped every day. Well, you know who's doing that?
How many maintenance people is over there in that building?
Two full-time.
If that includes bill inspections, DSS?
Four.
Two full-time, the whole building?
There's actually more than two, because they have a person that comes in at night that mops.
Yes, but during the day, there's two people.
Yeah, there's two during the day. But they're doing all, they appear busy, changing light bulbs, dusting things.
They're busy.
Doing the general day-to-day housekeeping stuff, they come in at four o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
To buff floors and...
Can you do that with county maintenance, Derek? Can you make that happen with the right products and training and...
Yeah, I'll, I've had any tried that, and it didn't work. I'll have to see where we're short, well, I mean, it, we've been accredited, we've been accredited two times, you know, and, and, you know, we, we could be using the right products now, I mean, I'm just going to have to, to see, but I think certainly maintenance, maintenance staff is capable and can, can do this job. They can do anything, and I believe that.
I think, I think Mr. Bill brings up a real good point, and, and we've seen some other instances where we've had some maintenance issues that, that for whatever reason, it just didn't get addressed. And I'm not questioning what you're saying one bit, that you've been through this multiple years, but my concern is, if we're going to hire another employee to do it, then I struggle with understanding why we can't train who we have to do it. And if it's, if it's a matter of not having enough manpower over there, then, then I would think that would be something that, that you and staff would make a determination on, work with Jim to get it resolved.
We could certainly sit down, like you're saying.
If you need another person with ours, I mean, if we borrow one more person, that is a big building. But if you've got DSS that certainly don't require no, for staff infections, you've got to be real careful, Jim knows that, been down that road.
Have we ever had an instance of there, somebody getting anything that, that we're talking about preventing, and in one of the, that we're sure that we can trace back and say that this was...
No, and, no, and we don't ever want to have one.
Well, and so, it appears that whatever we're doing right now is working, it is...
I think the issue is nurses are cleaning, though, we wasn't saying...
That's a piece of it. There are two parts to it. One is the staff that are doing it, and what we're paying that staff to do it. And the other piece is, and, and taking away from service delivery by doing that. And the other one, so that's the manpower piece. And then the other piece is just the physical cleanliness of the building.
As the liaison to that board, I want you all to remember what the makeup of that board is. It's two doctors, it's engineers, it's veterinarians, it's cross-referents of the professionals from our county, and they felt it within themselves that, that this was a priority, that this gets worked. So my suggestion would be, is that we direct Derek and Jim to get together and let's, let's hash this out, and I, I'm for funding this, and letting the funds be found from wherever. Let Derek figure that out.
If it's an employer, whatever it takes to...
Yeah, I can say it was, it was important.
Retrain, whatever it is, whatever needs to happen.
Yep.
If it requires more money, Mr. Major, you can, if there was, you can manipulate that with inside, but not have to change the overall budget number?
Yep. And I would, again, we can do that, and it certainly is, I mean, as the chairman said, it's a priority for the Board of Health, and we certainly look and will go back and reprioritize, we'll put that one to the top.
When does your accreditation start, do you know?
When?
Your new one?
September.
When?
September, this September.
So you've got...
It's already started, but they come in September.
So we just got two months to get it, July, August, to get something mailed down, is that all right? It's a hurry, man.
I would think that county manager would find time to get that done expeditionally.
Expeditionally?
We know he's a professional goal person. Yeah, that's a fact.
When did you get, when, I was on the board when we got through accreditation, how long did that, then, we decided to go through accreditation?
Well, we, it was decided for us by the legislature, but the first time was 2008, and then we did it again in 2013. So we've been through it twice. And both times, they've made recommendations about the cleanliness of the building.
And those standards change too?
They do. They get more stringent.
Jim, do you remember during accreditation pro, process, was there any other items that, that was noted that, that should be addressed?
Things that we've, no, we've, we've done our best, our, at level best, to address them, Derek and I, and Jack. This is the, this is the biggest, this is the one that is generating the most concern at the moment, yeah.
And does, like I know at the, we discussed the detention center and that facility, I think the sheriff had mentioned that the detention center staff had cleaned that facility, and that was only, I know we do certain kind of, I know that Dr. Creel comes in, we dispense medicines, I know that for anything else, they're going to the, to the ER, to the hospital, to do those procedures. With our ambulances, and like the people that come hauling around in our ambulances, does somebody, I mean, that obviously has to be a sterile environment.
Our, our staff, the medics are responsible for the...
And again, I just...
We can make the nurses responsible, but I can tell you, if you're paying for something, you don't, you're losing services by doing that.
I think that as far as, I think it is a stretch to say that, I think they're cleaning between times facility, but are they, I mean, are they coming in early and doing the floors and cleaning everything? And do they, if they're using these supplies, is that something, I mean, that, if you're a nurse, do you want somebody else, do you want to take somebody's word that they've been cleaned, or that, I assume that kind of gets back to the, the wanting to know that they're responsible for...
Health facilities do it all over the place, but one of the things that we require during accreditation, and that's what I talked, I've talked to you about recently, that it used to be we only needed a letter from the county saying the county took full responsibility for the maintenance of the building. And now it's, according to accreditation, it's required to do instead of just a letter. And that gets a lot off of me, but it also puts a lot of responsibility and liability on the county, because if anybody comes out with hepatitis A, HIV, flu, strep, methicillin resistant staff, norovirus, E. coli, any of those things, and they, they can trace it back to our building, and thank God it's never happened before, we're unhooked for that. And if, you know, we've, we've had, during Ebola, we had travelers that came through our building, we've had Zika travelers through our building. These are all things that we're trying to protect our community from, and the people that we provide services to through the health department. And that comfort level's not there all the time.
John's crying, so we'll leave it at that. So I understand, Mr. Chairman, we're on the same page since you was lead on, based, you're the one that got KO'd.
I know they've hashed it out a lot together, but I think we get a little hump to make it happen.
So we've got to find out the supplies, number one, so what's the nurses using?
What we purchase for them to use, which is not the stuff that you, it's only the surface cleaner, it's not the, the in-depth cleaning.
They're not using the right stuff anyway.
They're using the right stuff for the day-to-day, wipe down of the counters and things like that, yeah. I can't remember the name of it. No, it's not.
Oh, well, you, we don't know what the...
Yeah, I don't know what they're using, but it's not the same, I can tell you, it's not the same, I see the containers. It's not the same product that we're using.
But you're using what needs to be used.
We're using what needs to be used for the day-to-day, any exam, hip down after somebody gets off of it.
With all that stuff, we'll train what, you know, somebody's, sure, Derek, sure. Yeah, as long as he likes swinging a golf club, actually, I don't have to do it.
Good answer.
Good answer.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
All right.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate your patience. Broadband. We had some discussion last week about, Commissioner Wallace has some concerns about, I think we'd budgeted, there's fifty thousand in the budget for broadband. Do you want to get some further thoughts on it? I'm sure we've all been thinking about it too, so...
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think that deployment of broadband is a single big economic tool that we, that this board can consider. I expressed some concerns with the county manager about putting fifty thousand dollars in, in a forty million dollar budget. I think that, that is an indication of this, of what kind of priority it is. I do not believe that the county needs to get into broadband business. I do think that, that, that this government is in a, is in a position relative to broadband, where we're going to, we're going to need to help get down the road. I think that, I think that there's, at least I think, some, some of the thoughts that I have in how to deploy that makes good use of taxpayers' money. And I would, I'd be prepared to debate that with, be delighted, as a matter of fact, to debate that with. So, you know, Chief talked about last time, his, and tonight, his internet speed, and his internet cost. We were at a broadband meeting this afternoon, and, and I believe it'd be safe to say that there was nobody in that room from Macon County that was with their, with their internet. So, you know, one, and this was discussed this afternoon, one of the mistakes that, that gets made over and over and over again with broadband deployment is there's a master plan developed to, to deploy broadband throughout a whole county. And, and that's easy to do, rather than speaking. The problem with it is it costs a lot of money, and the utilization is very low. And those who have deployed that, some will even admit it, it was admitted today. So, so what I would like to see the county do is, is not hire a person, but have, have some funds available for a consultant to kind of be the center point in which all information flows through relative to the broadband, and some budget money available for some pilot projects in the county. When you start, when you start talking about the deployment of fiber optic in the mountain region, it's certainly more expensive than, than doing it in the flat country, but I don't think anybody would argue that everything we do, if you're costing a little money. So, so that's, you know, that's, that's nothing. But when you, when you start trying to put a value on not having broadband, no one has come up with a formula. And, and while there's, there's a lot of conversation about monies being available at the state and federal level, it takes a period of time for that to happen. And, and I think that, that a lot of rural counties are way behind the eight ball in the deployment of broadband. I think getting started, doing some pilot projects will, will help us determine whether or not a plan like this will work, number one. And number two, I can't help but believe, and, and I've talked to a lot of folks that are grant writers, it will give us a one-up whenever we start, because we're going to get to the point that we can't fund this thing, but, but if we've got pilot projects in place, and we're building this thing out, it's going to give us a one-up in regards to some of other folks that don't have that. So, so, you know, if we'll, if we're go, I think we'll find it in a smart way. We can, we can start deploying broadband, we can pick and choose, doing it throughout the county, in the areas where we can get the most bang for our buck. Over time, as, as those areas get harder and harder to serve, it's going to cost more and more. And, and in my opinion, we're not going to be able to deliver broadband to everybody in Macon County. And, and I don't think we need to go into it thinking that we can do that. But there's been some work, groundwork done, that I think identifies that we are in need of broadband. I think that there's, there's some carriers that currently have a presence, other carriers that have interests and have a presence. The problem is, is, is there's, there's no central organizational structure for that to happen. And I don't want to see government get any bigger than it already is, but I think there's a time and place for everything, and that, and in my opinion, you know, having that consultant on staff, that this information could flow through, it gives, it gives the citizens a place to come to, it gives us, us as a board opportunity to have somebody, a third party that could go out, and, and this isn't something that's going to be a hypothetical. And a lot of the conversations we had about broadband is hypothetical, but this situation where we've got names and phone numbers, and the amount of bandwidth that's required in that area, so that when you sit down with a carrier that's, that's servicing close to that area, then they know it's a real opportunity to do all the labor. So then you've got, you get their attention at that point, instead of just a hypothetical, we're going to build Macon County. So obviously, I feel very strongly about it. I've talked about it for two years. And, and I think, in my opinion, much like with schools and everything else, the dollar's committed to it, is an indication of priority for everyone sitting around this table.
Carl, what would you suggest that number be?
I'd like to see a hundred thousand dollars for the consultant, five hundred thousand dollars for pilot projects.
Now, this is a new topic too, it's not like we're not, I mean, we can't adequately compare this to education, because broadband's really just been a topic in the last, I've been on here four years, it's never really been a topic.
No, but...
Until, and education's forever, so it's, I don't think it's, I don't think it's adequate to say that there's no, we don't treat it with respect because of the money that's been allocated to the budget. I don't know if that's an accurate assessment or not.
Well, I think it is from the standpoint, when you look at, at where Macon County is, and, and, you know, Derek and the county staff has, has put together some maps that show where broadband is available in Macon County. When you compare those maps to a lot of other counties, especially outside of western North Carolina, our, ours are very sparse. So, you know, I guess you could certainly argue, it has been a priority, but there just hasn't been anything done. Because, and I think I'd be corrected by the county manager, it's, it's much easier when you look at those maps, to look at where we do have broadband that meets the state standard than where we don't have.
Then you're saying, you're not talking about this, and I appreciate you educating me on broadband, because I don't, I have terrible internet service, I live on part of town, I accept it, that's what my life's going to be. I don't expect anybody to give me anything better. But you're talking about, up to a hundred thousand... But you're talking about, up until a hundred thousand for consultant and a half million dollars for, would you get your plan together first before you appropriate funds to do pilot? I mean, is there a plan? You gotta have some sort of plan before you start building out, ain't it, or?
I think there, there, and that's, that's a great question. There's, there's some community efforts that are in degrees of, of process that's, that's currently out there. There, there are some communities that have, uh, gone door to door and has name and numbers of folks that, that need internet. There's some that have had discussions and community meetings. And there's some, like Corbin Road, who's deployed high-speed broadband up Corbin Road in Holly Springs community. So, but, and, and that's why that, A, that's why that consultant needs to be there, because that needs to be funnelled person. How long do I think it, it, would it take? I think that once the general public understands that this is the process, that those groups that's out there in these various stages, or, or the consultant person's probably gonna be overrun to begin with, until he gets a process or she gets a process in place, you know, this is what we need to do to get to here. But I think it will happen very rapidly. And I also think that there's, there's, because of the lack of broadband in Macon County, we've got an opportunity, a real opportunity, to deliver broadband to a lot of people relatively quickly at a, at a much lower cost than what some of the numbers are that's floated around, because there's not any.
And, oh, I'm, I'm not sure that the broadband committee, as I said today, we're the best kept secret in town out there. In our last meeting, I think Mr. Rollin will go along with this, and is that we're, we're fixing to make the step in, in hiring a consultant. But now, when I hear you say you're not to hire, that you have a consultant on staff.
Be a contract person. I've, I'm not advocating hiring a county employee, and here's why. The, 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 these public utilities, power, the phone companies, power companies, cable companies, they, they have all gone through this process of early retirement. So, there's a lot of folks out there that have fulfilled their requirements as far as the utilities are concerned, and they are available. They have retirement coming in, et cetera, et cetera, but they still would like to work, and there is a wealth of knowledge within those folks.
And everything you're saying right there, you may just be a little bit out in front of us at our next meeting. Well, Ms. Thompson's, Sarah Thompson from Southwestern Commission, that she talked about phase one. Did you read that in there that phase one is a consultant? And, and, and I felt like we were ready for the phase one, but we've got a broadband committee that we've listened to and warns back there. I, I feel, I don't wanna circumvent them, because, because we've empowered them to give us information. But I, I felt like we're on the verge of what you're talking about. I, I think when you and I talked, um, I'd have talked to, well, I'm, I'm not sure I understood the five hundred thousand. The project money or seed money, I think is what you're saying.
Five hundred thousand would be to do some pilot projects.
Right.
To, to prove, obviously, everyone around this table is not as sold on this as I am, okay? So, so we need some pilot projects where we can come back and I can, I can pour y'all and say, this, this is what they did. They deployed it on this road. They deployed this many users and they deployed this much bandwidth, and this is the impact. And then, then this, this board can look at that and, and make a determination that, that that is, that is tax dollars well spent or not.
Yeah, and I, I thought, I'm, I'm trying to think if you were on the board at that time. I, I think you were, I thought we were, at one time we were doing that, we were bringing people in, uh, like Ms. McCall, the Cartic J group, that were trying to get sixty people there, and they're trying to get a tower up there. Then those people were committing to a provider, and what would happen is then, when those sixty people committed to it, they'd go get a provider.
Ms. Shields, Ms. Shields, how long ago was that? Before I was on the, so, it's before I was on the board.
Is it?
So, that was about a year ago.
Okay, yeah.
And today, there are absolutely no close to getting broadband than there were a year ago.
I think the discussion, it may be true about the end result, but I think the discussion that I talked today about, our first objective was, is to educate the commissioners. You know, I'm not as fluent as, as, as you are in the knowledge of this, but to educate the commissioners. We went through, we had providers here, then we had, we had individuals that came and talked to us. Then we had a situation where, uh, uh, Ms. Rollin and I looked at each other and said, we'll put this team together. And I believe that's what they were telling the other counties today, you need to get this team together. And we put a team together. I, I think the hard thing it's been to, to do is that trying to have, let's see, the time we met was May the twenty fifth, uh, April? We may have missed April, but, but we got a committee, Warren's part of it there, that's been discussing it. And we've had experts come in and talk to us about it, and we've had some people who are definitely would be fine consultants. And Ms. Thompson has come in and talked to us from the Southwestern Commission. David Hubs, last month, came and talked to the lady, what was her, Shannon, uh, we've had some quality people who, who come in, and I, I guess I've slowed the thing down, because I'm just trying to learn as I go.
And, well, I don't think, Mr. Shields, I don't think, you, you've not slowed it down. I think, first of all, I don't think it's been slowed down, and I think what happened was, when it, when this problem for the board, before you got on there, before you came on the board, it was brought, of course, publicly to the board. And so we had heard people come up before us and say, we have this broadband problem in Macon County. Moving along, we brought providers in here the next meeting, I think that was in October of twenty sixteen, right before you come on. So the providers came in here, and they were-
I believe you said that right out there.
And so, you know, we kinda talked to them and, and had a list of questions. Well, we found out, you know, we couldn't get, those answers weren't easy to get from the providers.
No, and I think, and I, and, and I think you're exactly right in what you say. And that, that committee serves its purpose. It determined need, and it, and it qualified, and I think it's important for this board, before any fundraiser spend and anything we do, that that need is qualified. And I think that if they didn't do anything else, that in itself-
And I, and I think that committee, before they wanna, they wanna, and that phase one of, from Ms. Thompson there, what she was explaining today was, and it had the word consultant in there, is, I, I think, a person asked me what the fifty thousand dollars was today in the budget, I said, it's a number. Had to have a number. Too low, too high, or what?
The Southwest Commission put money into it.
Well, and to speak to it, to speak to the, the fifty thousand dollars, as you said, that was, it was a, and as Mr. Shields has said, it's been a very, this committee has went through a very intensive information gathering process. We've worked, combined efforts with the Macon County Tax Office, Macon County IT staff, and the school system to put together a survey that was, mimicked a survey that Haywood County had released, and they have been taking steps as well toward increasing broadband availability in Haywood County. However, this had the address of the students and teachers that filled it out. And we figured, hey, the best sample group you can get, without bias to, to demographics with anything, is to send that out to the school system. We had an excellent response rate on that survey, and with those addresses, we, as Carl alluded to, we were able to pinpoint within Macon County, incorporated in with our mapping software, pinpoint everywhere that broadband availability was lacking or broadband availability was unavailable. At the same time, this committee, and this was, this takes, this effort alone took five or six months, getting everybody together. And at the, in the meantime, while this was going on behind the scenes, this committee had consultants coming in, speaking with us. There's been developments with what Warren is doing with the telecommunications tower upgrade. And this committee, we've talked about things, hey, does it, how could it benefit us by connecting these towers with broadband connectivity as opposed to microwave connectivity, which we were thought switching to? And so that possibility has been, has had some discussion, and, and we're looking for some answers there. We're, uh, you know, the consultants have came in, told, told us what would, has been successful other places, told us, uh, some things they helped us look at areas of need in Macon County. We've learned about WNC EdNet, about the formation of Balsam West, kind of the whole, uh, this whole broadband thing. It is, it has grown in Macon County. We've been brought up to that point. At the same time, we've recognized that broadband is a problem in Macon County. Broadband availability is a problem in Macon County. The Southwestern Commission, our regional council of governments here, has realized it is a problem as well. They've hosted forums at Southwestern Community College in Jackson County that have brought all counties and towns in the room for discussion and listening to these experts. The, what Mr. Shields is referring to is the Southwestern Commission, upon recognizing this problem is a real problem, has suggested getting a consultant to assist all the six regional counties that are, that are in that Southwestern Commission, seven counting us. And I think what the broadband committee decided, after we looked at this, identified the problem, gathered this information, next step is from going to the problem phase to the solution phase. So, that fifty thousand dollars that Mr. Shields is alluding, that we're talking about, was put in the budget because Macon County, you know, while we're an active part of, of the council of government, Southwestern Commission, and we understand being a consultant, we wanna work with and, and utilize that however we may, but we also wanted, as Macon County, to get our own consultant, to get somebody that would look out for only Macon County's best interest and help propel this effort forward, help explore and run down some of the things we had, uh, talked about with our, and see if we could perhaps make the most out of money that's already budgeted, such as the four hundred thousand dollars for the telecommunications system. See if there's anything we could capitalize on there that could perhaps help us begin to do this thing as, at a county, at a, at a county wide level. And I think, you know, one thing that, um, we had discussed too was these community efforts. And this consultant would be able to come in, as Carl was saying, you know, with pilot projects, if we could settle on a direction that we were gonna go as a county, we, we thought that, we felt that consultant did, um, as it voted on it, to, to let that consultant see where we could make the most. Just like you said, where we could make the most out of the pilot projects, get the most bang for our buck. But the first step, I think, is we went toward into the solution phase, was to have a consultant that would help us analyze where we were at, that would take a, a look at, at some of these areas, maybe some of these projects, see what resources we're already committing elsewhere, and see if we could bring all that together to, to propel us forward countywide.
And that footprint that you're talking about, and I, I thought Mr. Dinkins, Dinkins, Tony Dinkins?
Yeah.
He came and talked to us last time. I don't know if you know Tony, I, I talked. And he's, he's, he's the person, he's the person that you're talking about as, for a consultant. He's worked in it all his life. I don't know, I don't know these people. And I was just trying to, if I can get into the phase one and talk to Ms. Thompson, give us some names. You know, let us, let us know who, who's used these consultants and looked at the footprint that you're talking about. I've heard this footprint of Cartic J, where you had sixty people, you brought, you went and got the community, brought them to the provider. And I, I didn't have a problem with that, if it's working. And, and I think it may be working, except on a fire tower, I mean, not on a fire tower, but a tower. But I, I, I think we're at the point that you're talking about. But since I'll hire but have consult, consultant on staff, i- is that a new addition to the county?
No, he said third party did.
Like he's thinking end, end of contract.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be, A, it's gonna be somebody that, I, I believe that we can get somebody that lives in Macon County to begin with.
I'll tell you, that's the one we had last time.
Not somebody that's familiar with Beaufort, North Carolina, although Beaufort's a very nice place. But somebody that lives here, that's familiar with these mountains, that's familiar with what it takes to get construction. Much like someone would know how to build a house here, or landscape here, or, or put a sewer line in. It would get somebody from here that lives here, that's vested here in our community. And that, excuse me, that person, I, I, we, I use the term consultant, but really they're a construction manager. Okay? Because they're, they're a consultant and a construction manager, because they're, they're gonna be involved in the implementation of it, not just the design of it.
Okay, everything you said there, I, I, I think the broadband committee, we're, we're in that moment.
Yeah, we got it, we-
We, we, we don't know, we just, we were trying, I was trying to, what I said today is, Ms. Thompson, I need to meet with you. You're, you're the chairperson of the Southwestern Committee, I need to meet with you. Are there names out here? And that's what you're saying, is that we need to have a collection of names, preferably from Macon County, who unders, who understand that. We're, we're there, uh, we're just, we're just maybe not as fast as-
And there's grant, well, I mean, we're right where we need to be. I, I don't think this committee had, I don't think it's dragged. I don't think it, we've wasted any time. We're, we did all of our research, we got a final product. We got this survey that we wanted to get taken care of, we got all the information gathered that we wanted to get gathered, and we did all that to identify the problem. Now we're moving forward from problem to solution. We have put money into higher budget, we have put money into the budget to hire a consultant to do just what you're saying to do, to, to go forward with that next step. And I think what you're saying, Mr. Shields, is just we're trying to, to get some ideas for who is a consultant to hire. So that's what we're in now. We, we, there, there's some grants going through. We have an ARC grant that is coming up in August, that could potentially be more funds to help us get that. That's why, you know, that, that we're getting this consultant in line to be able to help us pursue these grant opportunities to, uh, and, and to keep propelling this effort forward toward a solution. I don't, I think this committee, as Carl alluded to, it's, it's served a great purpose, and it's, we have gained a lot of information, and it's taking us now, the recommendation that has came from this committee, along with the survey that we'll use as a tool in pursuing grants and things, is to get a consultant, get a professional that is familiar with Macon County, like you're saying, familiar with broadband and mountains, and help us move forward. And I think fifty thousand's been in the budget for that.
If you're not familiar with the House Bill sixty-eight, and I meant to bring a copy of it, he's from Tabor City. Me and Kevin met with him, and the county commissioner for education certainly supports it. Hits for broadband for rural counties. Hit, and hit his, passed it, and there were six votes against it in the House. Now he just moved that, and that's in discussion now in the Senate. It looks very positive. How that's gonna work is that there's such a lobby against broadband in rural communities. If you go down there, they have to tag each other. So, 'cause there's no money. That's, it's like Carl said, there's no money, so they tag each other, so they don't wanna provide the service. So, this is the first bill that's made it through the House, and his name, he's a, I think his name's Jones, the representative. Uh, he's Republican from Tabor City, real nice guy. And, and this is an internet bill that will allow rural counties, tier one, tier two counties on broadband to be able to, to give that county the freedom to apply for funds. There's money that goes along with this House Bill sixty-eight. My phone's dead, we, or I, I couldn't read the whole, I meant, I meant to print it out today. So, hopefully, and I, again, we don't know where that's gonna land, or will we get money? But now, sir, I seem to think there's gonna, if it goes through, that the Southwest Commission will certainly have, will be eligible for some of that, and how that will be divvied up, I don't know. Or, or what that does, and what that gives the county's ability to do, and I'm well, my, I'm in the wheel- my, yeah, I'm in the wheel. But somebody like Carl will understand that you can go to a Mars broadband and say, here's a community here, and this is X amount of dollars, we will pay so much per, to lease this, you know, if you provide the service, we can provide X amount of dollars. That's it. And that's, if you read that House Bill, it's House Bill sixty-eight, it's in negotiation now. Uh, I did not call today to see where that is. And now Joy and Rich can tell you, Derek, exactly where that is in negotiations. Uh, or Hugh Johnson, the one can tell you exactly where that is. But he's got legs, and he's not dead, because he's got such a strong vote in the House. And how that would affect us, I don't, you can't tell. I don't, I don't know that, but, uh, but to answer the question, on the fifty thousand dollars, that's where we're at, right?
Yeah, for the consultant, and I think we're both saying the same things, and I think that the thought of the committee behind that, and, and Warren, you can certainly feel free, or Mr. Shields, feel free to, but the thought of the committee was to get a consultant to, to come and analyze where we're at, and, and what is the best way for us to move forward with this at a county level, not necessarily with the county plan, but at a county level, whether it is going community at a time, connecting the, the towers, we have discussed that, would, let them look at that, but show us the best way to get broadband to the most people we can get in Macon County, and show us the least path of resources to do that. And at that point, when we have that doc, when we have that, then I think the thought was, okay, now let's discuss funding. Are we gonna go, uh, for grants? If the grants need a match, we have money in fund balance. If we apply for a seven hundred thousand dollar grant that requires a hundred thousand dollar, uh, match, would we be willing to, it'd be the pleasure of the board, would we be willing to use those funds from fund balance to match the grant? Or if we, you know-
Is that what sir was talking about, the grants that's coming in?
Well, there are, there are grants, and there's grants available right now, um, that we could use.
Everybody and their brothers going after those grants.
Right.
And a lot of people that's already got a plan in place is going after those grants. And that, we're not gonna get in front of them. If we, here's my concern, you appropriate fifty thousand dollars, you hire a consultant in thirty days. The consultant works on it for a year. We're back a year later, and what do we got? We still don't have any broadband deployed in Macon County. We have zero to show for other than we've got another three-ring binder with a bunch of valuable information in it, that's not gonna give anybody any broadband, any better broadband than what they got now.
But I don't see what your suggestion makes it any better, time-wise or otherwise.
Because I can, I can hire a consultant in thirty days, I can, I can, I can have a plan in ninety days, bring it before this board, and in a hundred eighty days, I've already got multiple communities in Macon County.
But you're doing the hiring-
But I gotta have money to do it. Right now, I've only got fifty thousand dollars to do, and I can't bill nothing for that.
But, but you, your company is doing the hiring?
Pardon?
Your company's doing the hiring?
No, no. I, I say Macon County. From Macon County, can, can have that consultant onboard, have the designs done, because it, it, there's low-hanging fruit everywhere. All we gotta do is pick the low-hanging fruit, and we can have that done quickly. Or we can, we can go through another plan, and we can come back a year.
But we're both talking about a consultant, we're both talking about a consultant, I mean-
You're talking about, yeah, the way I'm seeing it though, is you got a consultant that's working on different things.
Well, I mean, we, well, the consultant can tell them whatever we, we tell them to work on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think Commissioner Shields, just from what I've gathered, is not understanding the complete concept of what Commissioner Gillespie's pushing there, so. But, um, I, I, personally, I'm, I'm sold on what Commissioner Gillespie's saying. I'm, I'm still swallowing deeply the dollar amount, but I, I understand of, um, I understand completely where he's coming from about actually getting it done on the ground, and that's what I can say. That's what he's gonna do. And I think y'all might wanna have lunch together and let, explain it to him exactly what you're saying, 'cause I've got you, I know where you're coming from, a hundred percent. Uh, now, I don't understand, again, the funds and how we're gonna work all that, but I've, I've got it.
I wanna see the bill that, uh, Mr. Bill has alluded to. It may well, it was critical to what you're talking about here, from the standpoint, counties don't have the authority to do anything that counties want to do. Counties have the authority to do what our legislature says we can do. And it may well be that that House bill is very critical in answering what the county can and cannot do in this particular situation.
County's got in real trouble, like going out on their own, and, and they went ahead and they got in the broadband business, or, and, and the internet business and the phone business, they, they gonna start throwing little attendants, which is like what we're talking about, more than we're talking about. And that's what I'm looking. And they, and so the, the big boys come in and, 'cause there's a huge lobby against, you gotta know that there's a lobby against this stuff. And, and they see that they're, that going about it like this, I think, is the right way, and to have a consultant come in and do it. And I think that if, you know, if we leave the fifty, what my thought would be, if, you know, see, first of all, what does a consultant cost? We don't, and does Southwestern Commi, Commission have somebody that, is a consultant for the region?
For the region.
And will that, how does that pertain to Macon County?
Will have to be in line with the, the region and-
Where does that put us in line? I mean-
That's exactly why we put that money in there, so we can go ahead-
It's just in line as being a follower, not a leader.
Well, that's why we put the fifty thousand dollars in the budget to be a leader, to go ahead and get our own consultant, even though the Southwestern Commission's getting one as well, and we will, we will reap the benefits of that as well too. But we wanted to go ahead and get something in there that, that Macon County citizens, so we could start working to provide them with broadband.
So you're not saying we can throw in with them that fifty grand, that's for our own?
That's for us.
And, and so if we, but if we need, Carl, Carl said we'll need another fifty for the consultant. If we need that, is this more willing to come back and, how much does a consultant cost? Do we know that?
I don't know. That's, that's why we-
Is he closer, more supposed to do a hundred?
I wouldn't ask for a hundred if I didn't think, no disrespect intended.
So, does that-
And I don't know that.
We're good.
I don't know that. And Carl should know, so if, if we need to put in, you know, if, do we find that out and come back later and add that?
We can do it, we can do it however y'all wanna do it.
I mean, I mean, do we, if we wanna move ahead with a consultant, do we do that now, or do we wait on, I mean, the question is, do we, do we go now, or?
Well, it's in the budget, and I mean, you know, we don't want the consultant to take a year either. And, and the scope of work that the, this consultant is gonna do is not mapped out. The, the scope of work that the consultant would wanna do would be what you're saying, is to let us map something out that could get the job done and, and get us the product back as quickly as possible. And that's why that, you know, I think that with your knowledge and background in this, that that's gonna be extremely valuable in helping us formulate what we're trying to ask this consultant to do in a timely manner for the consultant to do it in. But, you know, I think we're, we're saying the same thing here, is that this was put in, you know, so we could get out in front of the region and not have to wait on anybody. And if, if we need a hundred, if we need fifty more thousand dollars to be able to do that, then we'll get it and we will find the funds and put it in there.
And what are we gonna do when the plan comes by?
Well, I mean, we have twenty-one million dollars in fund back-
I think we better wait and see what, what we can do legally for the, I think, I think you better, I think we better see what we can. Uh, I mean, you place a phone call in McDowell County and see what they, what they got into. And, and so, I think we, you know, Carl, what I'd support is certainly going ahead with the consultant. If, if, if it only costs a hundred grand, that I would support putting that other money in there to get it on the board. I think that's the way to go, to get him to work in Macon County, to get that low-hanging fruit. So now the five hundred, I think that pilot program, he comes back, this is what it's gonna cost, and make sure, first of all, we can do it legally, 'cause that's the reason that bill is in front of him. There's some, they couldn't do it for a long, long time. That's the reason they put that bill out there.
I mean, without going into details, I have some concerns about, about that, that I would want to look into, I've not been asked to look into, but I'd be happy to look into if this board wants.
And if you read that bill too?
Most of those-
I do wanna see it, I have not seen it.
Most of those bills are written more around service providers, okay? We're not a service provider.
No, this is for the counties to be able-
House sixty-eight?
HB, it's House Bill sixty-eight. And to be, he, I've read it, I can't remember, it's to allow county, rural counties, you have to be a specific, a specific group to be able to apply for even to be able to do this, to be able to do this type of service and provide it, because you've got so many others that have lawsuits against other places that tried to do it. So he, this is, that's why it all centered around.
And again, just to re, reemphasize Carl's point, he's not, he's not suggesting that the county get into the business at all, he's, he's just looking at greasing the wheels and how to facilitate it.
But once you pay tax dollar to provide the service-
To a private, you know, to a private business.
You're paying a private-
There's constitutional questions involved in emoluments and that sort of thing, that we just need to work our way through to make sure we know what we can and can't do.
But didn't it do the same thing for municipalities in the counties, could not participate in being a provider?
We're not a provider. We're not, we're not close to that.
If you, if you're putting money-
We don't, we don't want that.
No, we don't wanna be in the internet business, period.
But tha, tha, then again, still what I'm, what I'm saying is, we have a broadband committee, and to speed something up, we just bypass them and-
Well, I think the broad, we're doing what the broadband committee said to do. We're, we're hiring a consultant. I, I mean, that was put in the budget, that fifty thousand dollars was put in the budget to do exactly what we're talking about here tonight. I mean, it-
They don't?
It's done.
But, but what, what we're saying here, you may not be excited with the speed of it, but we don't know the speed of it.
He, I don't think he does either, do we find one?
Yeah, I mean-
Carl said it'd take him, how long do you think a consultant would take, Carl?
I think he'd be ready to build in six months.
Six months.
No more than six months.
That's great.
You found the right consultant.
That's great.
But it's, because we don't have any money to build. There's no, there's not been any money appropriated to build.
And we don't know if we can.
Yeah, make sure we're ready to build first.
I think that's the issue, is you gotta be certain that you have the ability to lawfully appropriate the money to do so. And I'm not saying that you can't, what I'm saying is, you need to be certain that you can before you embark on doing that.
But to go ahead with a consultant is no problem.
Right. And I think that's what we're doing, uh, hopefully at our next meeting. But I, I, again, we haven't been stagnant, 'cause I think the lady out there today, complimented Macon County for being, uh, out there. We're ahead of-
Proactive.
Jackson County, yeah.
We've had people call us to ask how we set the committee up and ask kinda how we organize the meetings. I mean, we're, the, the committee, um, and I, you know, Commissioner Gillespie alluded to it, has served an excellent, getting, getting us to the point we're at now. I mean, it's been a, it's been an excellent tool, and, uh, just, Mr. Shields, thank you for-
If a Gary Shields took his thing with nothing, none of us, Carl, for you to come on the board, for none of us even was gonna even touch it.
Doing a great job.
Gary Shields, that I'll do.
For the same reasons you're saying, we have a need in this county, and for the same reason that Tommy James would say, for the benefit of their economic, uh, you sit there in a planning board and you hear a realtor say, "I lost the sale today because I couldn't get broadband." And I'm sitting there thinking, whoa, th, this is, this is serious. And, uh, and so that started building that fire, that, but again, I may be the one that's kinda slowing to keep the fire going, but I just wanna make sure I get my bases covered. We are ready in this committee to find a consultant. Who that is, I have no idea. How much it costs, have no idea. And that's why I went to that meeting today, is swap cards with people, trying to find, hey, can you tell me somebody? And when Ms. Thompson was the first from the Southwestern Commission, she was the first person who spoke, and she talked about the phases that you had to go through regarding the consultant. I had to have the, I had the opportunity to be the second person, although I said, "I need to see you." We're, we're ready for that phase one.
And I think we need to too, you know, that RFP, we need to ask that consultant, and, and I'm assuming it's gonna have to be, I mean, we're gonna have to be specific in what we're asking for, how we want it done, um, the things we wanna look at. And so I think that RFP that goes out is going to play, how that's worded and what's contained in that will affect that, the cost of that consultant. Is that safe to say?
No question about it. It, and I would recommend that the committee doesn't have somebody with expertise on that. Uh, it may be of value to the committee to have the committee invite Carl to come in and weigh in. He may have some great ideas on what we're looking for in the way in.
Absolutely.
Of a consultant. And we've had outside people coming in that shared their experience with us on how to do that. Uh, but I guess what I was trying to get, saying there a while ago, this is not an excuse, during budget time, it's, it's hard to find time, and, and that's what you may be alluding to, that we, we, we got behind, uh, dur, during this time.
Just the nature of the budget process.
It's a beast.
The committee, the committee has recommended to put the funds in there to hire a consultant. The committee, at that point, the committee has made its station, it is here. I, I think now, with the, the expertise that Carl has on the board, along with Mr. Shields, along with whatever resources we need to do, I think that with the committee approving that, approving that request, now it is on us, it is on the board to seek the consultant and move forward. That, that was the recommendation of the committee, so that's where we're at. We're not, I don't think in any way circumventing the work of that committee. I think this is taking that committee's work from the information gathering stage to the solution phase.
Yeah, yeah, but it's been like we're blessed to have someone like Carl.
Uh, there's probably-
There's Shields to, that has worked for this committee, and you got Carl, that's knowledgeable on how it works, so.
We're here.
I think we're pretty well blessed.
We're here.
I mean, we're here. And I think we are light years ahead of the rest of, I mean, I was talking to Connie or Graham County, matter of fact, I know we are, in, in Clay County doing nothing, so.
Ride over to Clay County, and you'll see how far behind we are.
Yeah. Well, I talked to Clay County yesterday, and, uh, so I think we're, we're in pretty good shape. We're blessed to have the folks that we have, so.
And we're moving forward.
Yeah.
So would you, would you like to get a hundred for the-
Well, I would say we, let's wait and see what we, what it's gonna accomplish.
Maybe a hundred.
Maybe, yeah, we don't know. It's like, sort of like the school.
This board'd like for me to do a little bit of preliminary looking on what we can and can't do, it's, uh-
Yeah, I think just waste your time if you don't do your, if we don't get the legal part of it in there. And I think, Carl, I both said that tonight, that needs to have a, a legal voice in, right? What's it back there? You, you need to be involved to see if we can do what we want to do.
And when you do a project, you wanna have it in a local agreement of some type, if you're spending tax dollars with each one, each project, it's very important. If you're spending, now, to me, that's, I think that's what we like to try to read about. It's, 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 it's like anything else, when you spend, it ain't like private business.
Good discussions tonight, uh, at this board, uh, actually, I've been really good discussions tonight. I can make some suggestions on what we might do to our budget, so that we could afford more, uh, if we decide to more, more broadband. I can even find us enough in that budget to give the schools more money too, if we decide, even though we voted on it tonight.
We have to.
I think that dust has to settle, or we're just guessing on what you need.
Lot of guesswork. I've got two quick things, Charlie, I know you're ready to go.
Now, we got, uh, we're on the items. I was just gonna say, if we're gonna leave this, we really haven't taken a vote on it. I was just gonna give a suggestion on how we can, if we feel like it needs more money in that line item, I'm just gonna give some suggestions on how we do that. If we decide that it's gonna stay where it is, then there's no need to give a suggestion on it, so.
But it's, but it's not something that we can't do at the meeting or something, I mean, it's not something we can't do.
Yeah, you can amend the budget any time.
We're gonna have to send a-
You can amend it at any time.
And get an RFP drafted.
Cut.
To see kinda.
And that'd give you time to see the legal part of it, uh, to see where we are.
There's, there's bound to be some, uh, some things that have been written on this issue as so important. Bound to be some things out there.
All right, so it sounds like this issue's gonna be tabled at least until our next meeting, until we can get a little research done, and what else are we looking for?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna ask Derek tonight, um, if he'd sit up at our meeting, broadband meeting on June the twentieth. The reason for that.
That's when we're gonna adopt the budget here.
Yes, it would be, yeah, but it's gonna be like at two o'clock.
Oh.
This, what's his name, Kevin, that's, uh, out of Asheville.
I can't think of a guy.
Who was supposed to be there today didn't show up, but he's.
The guy that put the whole meeting on from the state that we're leaning on for money, yeah.
Yes, and he's, he's out of Asheville, right? He's, he's stationed in Asheville. He's coming to Swain County on the twentieth at six P M, and what I was trying to see if we could bring him to Serena. And he's the type of person that would know about your legal stuff when you talk about eight days from now. But Kevin, I just, I've got it up there in the car.
This is what, this is what date?
The twentieth.
Where is that meeting to be?
We always have an annex, but he's gonna have one at six o'clock, Swain County. Uh, and I just trying to, uh, we usually have a meeting at ten o'clock, but I was trying to say, if we had one at two o'clock, if we could connect with him and he can just kill two birds with one stone.
Not for me to be there, I'd be there.
Okay, uh, let he, let Derek now communicate, and I'll give you that name, we'll get that number, and we'll see if that person can do a little connection with us on that day.
All right, Southwestern Community College burn building. You made any, any progress there? Carl, Derek.
I think the last we had heard was that, uh, S C C had selected a, um, maybe a new piece of property at the last joint meeting we had. And I think it was kind of, um, we were waiting on them to, to come back to.
Last I can tell, just from the conversations I've had, I think this board is ready to move forward, um.
Definitely.
Yeah, so, we just need to come up, if somebody wants to grab it.
Uh, what, um.
I guess we just need to follow, I, exactly what we're waiting on. We're waiting on something from Dr. Thomas as far as.
I think if, if, we, we got an appraisal, did we get a survey or appraisal?
We got an appraisal of the piece of property that we're no longer using.
But not a survey, but we got a survey.
No, we got a survey, excuse me. They got an appraisal, we got a survey. We didn't get an appraisal.
Survey. And then the discussion shifted to move into a different site, so at, at this point.
I don't think we have an appraisal or a survey on it.
No, nothing has been done because there's not been any indication from this board to Southwestern, if that was a possibility. But I think, I think that's something that you and Dr. could.
And I think that if, if, you know, we kinda know a general out, generality of, of that new site, um, and if the board so desires, we'll move forward with the.
I think this, yeah, just my understanding, I think this board's ready to have that discussion and get it done.
What is going? A new survey and appraisal.
To move it over, you know, do you know where it's gonna be before Paul?
Over the hole there.
Uh, they were gonna move it over to a much, a much better place for a lot of reasons, over towards, more toward the library.
You go straight through the library, park a lot, right, straight out through there.
It's a whole lot easier, a whole lot better grading for runoff, for a whole lot better, it's just a better location, lot less. Uh, just a whole lot better location for the building. You get it, you get away from the greenway, uh, there's a lot of concerns about that.
It's right above the greenway.
It, it is a departure from your present M O U with them.
Yeah.
It's green one, right?
You probably wanna amend your M O U.
No, but it, but it, it's still farther away than it was before.
It's a lot farther away.
Because of the, of the grading of it.
Before, before it was right there on top of it.
Yeah, and we had concerns about the river, I mean, it's eventually gonna end up downhill anyway, but, uh, about the runoff and, and, and just the whole aspect of using that. It would be, uh, it would be to our advantage to move it to, I think.
Yeah, let them present us a plan, I don't, they give me, show me a plan.
Yeah, I, I would like to, to get perhaps a tax map when somebody is approximating where this is going to be. We can look at it and make sure there's not any lapage with any of the conservation easements that are in that vicinity. There are some in that vicinity.
Uh, he would be way on below that.
Likely, yes.
Yeah, he would be. I mean, I've been out there and I know pretty close, but I still don't know exactly where they had him.
I don't believe him, that's my problem.
I know where I've got him, but I don't know where they got me.
There's a little service road there in there, but it's a green.
That's right.
Yeah.
And, but I think all the conservation easements, and.
They're, they're much closer to the river.
And the historical, you know, there's, there's, we give, you know, there's part of it, it's historical society on down below that. But now it's on the other side, it's, it's over across the hill. Wouldn't be no, nothing to do with this. So, but you're just, you're right, probably just look at, have, we need to proceed with that, and somebody needs to, I don't know the exact location. Better location than anything on the other side.
Dr. Paul's opiate, take a. A photo copy of the, uh, tax map and red head and show us possibly where he talks about.
And Mr. Bell and Dr. Paul's is down there and walked the site, and I'm sure they'd be more than willing to come out and share that.
But don't you agree it's a much better location for a lot of reasons?
From a cost standpoint, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because I think that's something, not for tonight, but that's something that this board's gonna have to address is, is what that facility is, is gonna cost Macon County. Cause there's still that conversation of being around two million dollars, so.
Do y'all want me to grab that one and lead it?
I believe Dr. Thomas will be here tomorrow night, right? I believe I'll not talk to him today.
Does the board members feel comfortable in taking that lead or are you, I mean, you want somebody else to do it?
Listen, ask him about tomorrow night, maybe he's got somebody to take the lead on.
We don't want that.
Derek's gonna be building cell towers. I have people there today to do something.
Tasting dogs.
But there is a process that we have to go through with this, they have to go through with this, we have to commit to the funds and, and then, you know, it's.
The first thing we need to do is the appraisal. Get the survey, get the piece of property appraised. We need to know where it's located. We need to get the M O U revised. Once we have all that, we're ready to go.
Yeah.
And also it has to have the amount of property they need, because.
That's true.
You know, when you, it's on that slope, you don't leave near as much property, and for the base use, use that property, one of these, somebody will.
You're not talking about that pile of dirt from the library?
No.
On the past there?
Down from that, over.
On the right.
That's right.
But not down to the flat.
No.
At by the river by any stream.
No, no.
Then you're not gonna be in those conservation.
Cheryl, help me remember, we'll just have that as an agenda item for tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Uh, and we'll ask Dr. Thomas.
And if I may, I have one, um, item I would like to remove from the agenda item H.
Okay.
That's Matt.
That's a good.
Item one?
H.
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 So now where did I?
Any other budget issues?
Yeah.
Somebody wanna cut the sheriff's budget or any of us or?
Yeah.
Find out, two of us too.
I do have one issue.
Any management, go ahead, sorry, Carl, trying to lighten the mood in here.
It is, it does get to share, but probably, hopefully in a good way. Um, looking through the county manager's, uh, proposed budget, and this should be no surprise to you, Derek, 'cause I told you I was gonna bring this up if you didn't. Page three, phone system installation. Um. Prior to being on this board, uh, there was a, uh, vote taken to replace the aging phone system, uh, with, and this leads, I'm reading straight off of this, you don't read it, but it's gonna be ninety-three thousand dollars annually. Uh, current one costs about two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars annually. So that's about a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in savings, and that's to be commended on that. The one issue I've got is, I noticed it in several places, in the sheriff's department, um, budget, there was, um, and they're setting cell phones, this is landline charges to the vendor that we are moving away from. And the best I can tell, there's still a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in this current budget that should come out from the savings that is described here on page three.
The telephone line items, although, um, we do, the project is now up and running, it, it is installed now. We didn't, we were gonna experience any hiccups in the phone installation, which is, of course, ran right up to the fiscal year seventeen eighteen budget in this year. And we wanted to give it a year, we wanted to give it a year to work, to, to see it run. And, um, if those savings are realized in that telephone, they won't be spent out of there, and that money will just keep accruing as the year goes on. But I felt a lot better doing that than I did pulling it out and then having a hiccup and having to come ask for, uh, money out of contingency or what. You know, if you take, that's, both of those, and it's in my budget messages, it's an approximate, approximate phone cost on each one. So you take a hundred and thirty thousand out of there, even if you take, say, a hundred thousand out of there, and we only save eighty thousand, then that means that we're having to come back mid-year toward the end of the year and request twenty thousand dollars. That phone system's gonna save a billion, and the only question is, is how much? And until we see it work a year, I, I, you know, you can't, I don't feel comfortable budgeting this cost savings in, in the first fiscal year that we're running the system. And I mean, you know, that's, that's what that is.
Well, I, I have all the faith in the world in, in you looking at the numbers and, no disregard, but you'd split a penny if you needed to. So, uh, I think, I think, I think that hundred and, uh, thirty-one thousand needs to come out of there. And I'm confident that if you've done the valuation as, and done as thorough a job as you do on everything else, those savings will be there, and I'd rather save the taxpayers of Macon County that hundred and thirty thousand dollars starting now.
If you wanna do that, I'm, if that's the pleasure of the board, I'm more than happy to do that, but, um. I couldn't, uh, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend, I mean, it wouldn't, it wasn't in my recommended budget, and that's the reasoning behind. Um, and if the board, if, if the board wants to, to take that out of there and wants to vote to have that hundred and thirty thousand, we'll, uh, we'll pull it out. But I, we'd like to have a year to get the, the kinks worked out, see if there's any hiccups in the system. Um, you know, if we take a hundred, like I say, if we take a hundred and thirty thousand out and save a hundred, that's great, we saved a hundred thousand dollars in operating costs, but we're still having to come to the board to ask for thirty thousand dollars.
So I'm confused, was this in the sheriff's budget?
Well, there was, it was, it just, it was, it's, it's listed in multiple places and it's listed in the sheriff's.
Yeah, I'm with you, I'm with you.
Sheriff's budget, so, so it's, it's actually, you know, more than a hundred and thirty, because this hundred and thirty-one has nothing to do with the park that's in the sheriff's.
No, I saw, I saw this, but, yeah.
So it's actually more than a hundred and thirty-one, is that correct?
I'm not. What are you referring to in the sheriff's budget?
Probably where they insert their pages and break down.
I mean, it's, it's listed in multiple.
The sheriff's department, it's a little bit different.
Multiple times.
Right.
Through here, as, as, as identified as the current carrier.
The budget message was printed.
Yeah.
Your budget was printed.
Three months, oh boy.
Before.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that will be changed, that, because those charges are listed, tho- the sheriff's department budget, like the re- the entire remainder of the budget, will contain the operating costs associated with the current phone system. Everybody's budget will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will contain the current operating costs associated with the phone system. Um, and they're, they're again going.
That's our budget request, it's not, their, their actual budget will be part of the budget ordinance for the county.
Which, which, as it is recommended.
But that part, that's in.
Will include the operating costs associated with the current phone system.
Is the whole system in this standard work, John?
Smoke and maintenance, telephone maintenance, this is. Your part of the agreement is forty-two hundred dollars and necessary to continue our telephone communications.
That's in the sheriff's, the budget that the sheriff presented to me.
Correct.
Right. All the phone's cost, all the phone costs are, that are in there.
Is that all part of this two twenty-four?
Yes, yes.
There's cell phone cost, landline cost.
As well as, uh, yes, cell phones are included as well, but those numbers that were given.
The Mi Fi's.
That number that you're referring to, that two twenty-four is strictly related to the phone system.
That's what it says.
Yes, sir.
The old phone.
Yeah, which is no longer in. We have a new one that's gonna save us a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
We just, have we?
We just finished, I guess, I think phase four was just last week, yeah. Phase four just happened last week.
Last week, and, you know, what does happen to present the budget, you know?
So during budget prep, we weren't, weren't sure.
But still, yet, if, if it had been finished in May, I would have wanted to, to, to see a year on, on what was gonna roll out. I mean, I wouldn't, I wasn't gonna roll, I mean, you know.
And I know during budget meetings, Derek distressed department heads, like, we may leave it the same, that we're not gonna do budget amendments for you to use this money to buy something new.
I specifically told them, we're not doing budget amendments out of the telephone line item, every department head meeting we had.
So the difference is, is the sheriff's budget that he presented us is different from the one in.
No, it's the same one he presented me, his, his just goes into detail, it goes into detail, listing.
I guess, part of the question is that is, I thought we got away from the smoking out of the systems, not saying the checks are still going to them.
His budget, he did that.
We still live in a smoking business.
They still mon- they're still monitoring some.
But it's, it's still in the budget, still in the budget.
But the bill, it could be paid this way.
I'm with y'all now. But it won't be paid. Smoking out of the systems is what he's.
We're gonna pay it turn tier now.
I thought we.
Still in the budget.
But they are departments that.
For something that we're no longer payable, but yet the hundred and thirty-one thousand is still laying there.
But you think it needs to be, Mr. Manchin needs to stand there just to cover any unexpected talent, something might blow up or not what they said it was or whatever, true?
Yes, I think there will, I, I think there's gonna be savings, um, but you know, those are, you know, in the budget messages, it's approximate, they're approximate numbers. And, you know, it, it's, it's here and there, I mean, if, if we save a hundred, great, if, if we, if, if we save a hundred and thirty, even better. If we save eighty, great, um, there will be savings. Those were the numbers that we worked off of, those were the numbers provided by I T. Those are the best case, those are the best numbers, um, that we feel we have.
So we could save more, maybe.
Well, the, the proposal that was vetted in the R F P that we sent out was extensive, um, for that phone system. And not only did that R F P take into consideration, uh, the needs, uh, of our county, the quality of the system we needed, it took into account cost savings as well.
One item that you do need to take into consideration as you're trying to flesh the sound, y'all meet once a month. And if you have problems with phone system and you don't have money in your budget to deal with it, uh, you're gonna be calling at minimum, you're gonna be calling a special meeting to deal with it.
Gotta have.
Because you, you're gonna have to have telephone.
But we're in a, it says we are requiring on a five-year all-inclusive leasing agreement.
That's what it was.
All-inclusive leasing. It's all I have.
Anything else?
Just two things real quick. I passed out a resolution that, uh, we're ready tomorrow night. If, I'd ask you to read that over. It's about mental health funding, we'll be sending them down, they're, uh, they're in deep discussions for next week. And we're talking about tomorrow night. Also, we're gonna pass out, uh, a, a funding request for tomorrow night. The Jimpers will be here along with others. This is on the Nacquasi Initiative that the town and the tribe and, uh, this is on, uh, we're gonna ask for some money out of, out of this year's money to go into the initiative. They've done some good work on this with mainspring, you'll see the, this over, uh, and we'll be asking for some money. It's in this year's contingency and this year's budget to, to contribute. The town of Franklin has contributed their, their part. They're asking for our part. Main spring is, uh, and you can see what they've contributed, and, uh, and so, uh, and the work that they've done to help at the entrance to our, to our town. And it would help, why is the county involved? Because it helps, uh, you can see all the work that's been done by these folks and why the, why, why we think the money is important. So I would ask you to look at that. So I would ask you to look at that and, and we'll be asking for appropriation out of existing, out of this year's existing, uh, money, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Just to hand, Mr. Jenkins will be here to answer any questions about that.
How much are you going to be asking for?
Yeah?
Maybe 30. There's not much I can do.
He's 12.5.
Okay.
Ron.
Yes.
What's the purpose of this? Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
The, the resolution?
Yeah.
To ask them to restore, they're, they've taken like 69 million.
Asking who? Who's this going?
Just on the legislature. They have a member of the legislature.
Okay.
And they're taking 69 million out of the mental health funding reoccurring this year, 100 million next year reoccurring. To what it means to our county and the 23 counties is $5 million. What it means to Macon County in particular is we're going to lose people. And what it really means is number one, is our funding at the department, the substance of use for pregnancies. We had, that's included in that. That's number one. Number two, you know, we look for more treatment, a better expansion, another expansion at Boston, which is full. That's number two. Number three, it's going to cut back on the, on Black Mountain at ADAC, again, which is full. We just had one state of Black Mountain. We got him out of Robbie's jail. Me and Steve Stewart got him out. He stayed at Black Mountain. Wait time to get in ADAC now with no insurance, he has no insurance. The way to get in ADAC for treatment. Not to mention detox. Robbie's doing the detox at his place. But wait time to get in Black Mountain now is four weeks for treatment.
Down to eight days, you say?
Huh?
You say it was down to eight-day treatment?
Well, oh, yeah, seven days for me to send you home.
And then has all, all other working counties?
All counties, yes. We're all, the Graham County pastors and Turkey's pastors. It's really affecting the rural counties. Our, from Haywood West more than anybody because, just because we don't have the facilities and the money. Talking to Tommy Tucker and, and, and to tell you the truth, it all comes from one LME, pardon, innovation. One. And they got their hobby and they said, we'll just wipe them out. Of course, he was making a million bucks a year.
The director.
Anything further? We'll finally ask for a motion to adjourn.
We're going to adjourn or just?
We're adjourned tomorrow night.
Mr. President.
We're adjourned tonight.
So we're going to motion to watch the ballgame.
Got a motion to adjourn and watch the ballgame. In a second. All in favor?
Aye.